I'll go ahead and call to order the special meeting of the Yountville Town Council for the envisioned Yountville Study Session for Tuesday, February 27, 2018. And I'll ask for a roll call, please.
Okay.
Who's going to do that?
Councilmember Doorman.
Here.
Councilmember Durham.
Still here.
Councilmember Mohler.
Here.
Vice Chair Dornbecker.
Here.
Mayor Dunbar.
Here.
Let's record show that everyone's here.
There we go. Where do we have a flag? So the one we're going to point to please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, we will face the outdoor flag just outside the front door.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And I will just remind folks, because we learned this a little bit last night, that you need to speak closely into the microphone so everyone can hear us, including the recording. So with that reminder, I'll ask for adoption of the agenda for today's meeting.
So moved. Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Any member of the public in the audience like to speak on an item that's not on our agenda today? Seeing none, we'll move right into our study session, evaluation of the general plan, land use element objectives and policies. I believe, are we starting with you, Sandra?
Sure. Good afternoon, Council. Today we have for you planned a study session to review the land use policies and programs of the proposed draft general plan and effort that we've been working on the last year. And we're excited to bring these items to you. Today we have staff present, and also two of our consultants, one of which is Christine O'Rourke with Christine O'Rourke Planning, and we have Peter Wench with WRT. And our consultants are here to help walk you through the presentation and our case studies, and then we're all here to answer questions, should you have any, when you have them.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, and good afternoon, Council. It's a pleasure to be here with you today. As Sandra just said, we're going to be talking about the land use policies and programs. And we have some specific ones that we've pulled out for discussion. That doesn't mean that we can do all of the, we can discuss all the policies and programs that are in that land use matrix that was distributed to you in the council packet. So I wanted to just kind of start off with the general plan update timeline to give you kind of a sense of where we are in this process. We have been having TAG, the Town Advisory Group meetings with the TAG since July, and we've been meeting every month with them. I know they've already been to the council to kind of give you an update on the work that we've been doing. Essentially, we've been reviewing all of the different elements or the chapters of the general plan, kind of doing one or two a month. But we've been spending a lot of time on land use. We actually talked about land use for three months. So we have been doing those TAG meetings, and we're going through, as I said, all the policies and programs that are in the existing general plan, because we wanted to start with those. And then we review them, talk about what's been working, what's not working, what needs to be changed, what we can keep, what we should lose. And we've come up with some draft policies and programs based again on the existing general plan. We've also had some community group, well, we will be having community group presentations, and those are scheduled for April 25. There will be one with the business community and one at the veterans' home. So we'll be getting input from those groups on the draft policies and programs. And we've been having community workshops. We've already had two workshops. One was held in August, which was kind of a general workshop where we touched on all of the elements. And then we had one that was concentrated on land use issues, and that one happened in November. So from both of those workshops, we've taken that feedback that we've gotten from the community, brought it back to the TAG so that we could kind of talk about that and refine the policies and programs as we were drafting them with the TAG. We'll be having another community workshop on April 26. And then, and we will be using the feedback that we get from you during this process in this month, and also we have scheduled another study session if we need it for next month. And then we'll be having the community workshop, we'll be going through all the draft, well, not all of them, but some of the major draft policies and programs at that community workshop, then bringing it back for additional input from the boards and the councils, and then at that point, and the council. And then at that point, we'll be drafting the general plan. Once we have a draft general plan, we'll be releasing it just prior to the community open house that we have scheduled right now for August 18. At the same time as this is all happening, we're going to be having our environmental consultants working on the draft environmental impact report, and that will be issued sometime after the community open house. And then when we have a draft, and the draft general plan and the draft EIR, we will bring it to the zoning and design review board for their last input, and then finally back to the council for the council's review and adoption and certification of the environmental impact report. So that is where we are on this timeline. So today, what we're talking about are just these draft policies and programs from the land use, from the land use element, and we have some specific land use policy options that we want to discuss with you. We wanted to get your feedback on those issues so that when we go to the community workshop in April, we'll be ready to present them and have a good direction from the council. So right now, we're not trying to wordsmith any of the policies or programs, there's going to be plenty of opportunity, they're going to come back to you again. We're really just looking for your feedback and input so that we can be sure that we're presenting these policies and programs at the workshop, that they really reflect kind of where the council is headed with them. So we also are looking for council direction on the draft land use map, and that's because we want to get our environmental consultants started on the EIR process. So we'll be talking about potentially making some changes in the land use designation and the zoning districts for some parcels in town, and we want to get that feedback from you, so at least we can give it to the environmental consultant and they can get started. Doesn't mean that we can't make some changes as we go along in the future, but at least we can get them started. So what we're going to do, we've got two big land use issues. Both of these were presented at the TAG and at the workshops, and we've had WRT and Peter Wench here from WRT really worked on a lot of these land use scenarios. So for the two big issues, one is the North Agricultural Parcel, and the other is the Downtown. We're going to have Peter kind of chime in here and talk about the land use studies that they did. Is there a question?
Yeah, before you proceed, Peter, I just want to make it clear for the audience that we're not making final decisions on these things today. When you're asking for council direction, that's what we're doing. We're giving you preliminary opinions, but not making final decisions. So this is not a decision-making session today lest anyone misunderstand that we're setting new policies now. So just to clarify that, that we're giving you some preliminary feedback only.
Absolutely. That's correct.
Okay.
Okay, so I'll turn it over to Peter now.
Thanks, Christine. Can you hear me okay? So as Christine said, we looked at several issues, and we brought them to the TAG, which is the Town Advisory Group, which is having the most contact with this process throughout, and also to the community and to the zoning and design review board, and each time, you know, shifting a little bit based on input, but presenting and exploring, in particular, two areas that we identified as having the potential to change over the next 20 years and to be influenced by the general plan. I think a lot of Yountville, I think it's important to recognize, a lot of Yountville really is, it is what it is, and the town is likely to kind of, in a lot of ways, stay. And our role is to sort of enhance that and to make sure that works. There are a couple of places where maybe there's some opportunities for us to take a more open-eyed approach to what could happen next. So one of those places is this agricultural parcel at the north end of town, which is within city limits, within town limits, but it is zoned for agriculture and has been in vineyard use for a long time. And of course, it's a parcel that, it's a piece of land that a lot of people treasure for its views and the way it represents access to, access to the natural and agricultural But we recognize that because it is within the town of Yountville, there is some potential for that to change, and we want to explore what would be the town's values, how would the town sort of project its values onto that parcel if it were to change? And so we thought about the opportunity to provide housing for a variety of types of families that may want to live in Yountville over the next 20 years. We thought about how could this property potentially contribute more to a successful and resilient visitor-oriented economy in Yountville? And we thought about how that property could contribute to the town's ability to provide, you know, additional parks or public amenities. We also wanted to evaluate carefully what values that property has now in its current form. And so we recognize, as I mentioned, the longtime vineyard use, that highly scenic quality that it has along its edges, the views that you have particularly coming in, sort of a gateway experience on Yountville Cross Road as you come into town, you know, from the east, if you are coming in from that way, and the fact that part of the property is actually within a flood zone. So there's some limitations on the form that future development could take if there were to be any future development. We went ahead then and sort of placed some typical types of development on this property that which are reasonable to imagine could take place there and which, in which could sort of serve town goals. The first thing we looked at, actually, instead of necessarily serving town goals so much, this is something that actually could happen under the current agricultural zoning, not automatically, but it could happen. And this is a winery, tasting room, production facility. And so we literally just superimposed Domaine Chandon, and we scaled it down a little bit because it would have to be a little bit smaller in order to be sort of the right size for that parcel. But this theoretically could take place on that parcel. We looked at the possibility of, let's say, a resort like Solage at St. Helena, and we placed that on this parcel, and along with a little bit of housing, because interestingly, Solage actually was built with some housing as well. So we showed how that could fit on a parcel while also, you know, leaving aside the portion of the parcel that's in the flood plain and also providing potentially a park. And then we looked at sort of a hybrid there, which is still, there's still a resort, but you would have also a combination of different housing types in some neighborhoods there and maybe an expanded park. So the zoning and design review board was in favor, I think, of that latter option, and I'll turn it back to Christine.
Okay. Sorry. There was a duplicate slide there. So that was the, what we had presented at the community workshop, and the feedback when we presented that, we had the group break into small groups, and they kind of discussed it, and then they talked about what they would like to see on that parcel. And it was kind of a mix. I think most, there were a group of people who wanted to see that parcel remain in agricultural use. There was also a group of people who were supportive of having housing development. So when we brought this back to the TAG for discussion, we framed it as if, just to read as this, "Consider rezoning the 33-acre North Agricultural Parcel to allow mixed residential development, open space, and parks." So that was kind of what we had the discussion around. The TAG was split on this, and they actually ended up voting against it, four to five. But because it was such a close vote, and because it was very close also kind of at the community workshop, we wanted to bring the idea to the ZDRB and get their input, and then ultimately to bring it to the council for discussion. The ZDRB was actually, we had a couple of members who were absent that evening. So we had three commissioners there, or board members there, and they were, all three of them, in favor of mixed residential zoning. In fact, they kind of preferred the mixed residential zoning to what would be allowed there with the current use, which would be a winery or a wine facility processing, wine processing facilities would be allowed on that parcel. They did however, recommended perhaps a smaller area for housing to kind of look at that, and they also wanted to make sure that we maintained the view corridor that comes off of Yountville Cross Road. So we went back, and WRT did a new scenario for us, and so this is showing two smaller parcels. Both of these kind of sections here within the parcel are about three acres, and they could even be developed separately. It could be phased development. There's also maintaining that park perhaps in the flood zone area. But this preserves that view of the hills from Yountville Cross Road and just provides a little bit of room for the town to grow and to provide more housing if needed. In this case, what we're looking at is potentially a mixed residential zoning district, and that would allow up to, well, between eight and 10 dwelling units per gross acre, could also allow up to 25 units per gross acre with the affordable housing overlay. And then we'd be looking at something like 50% of the housing units reserved for single-family detached dwellings, unless, of course, a lower percentage is needed to accommodate affordable housing, and also a minimum of 25% for multifamily units. And that is the standards that right now exist for a mixed residential zoning district. We also wanted to kind of look at what the housing need was and what the potential is on these. So at housing potential at the full build-out, which is really about 15 acres, that was the earlier slide that you saw, that would accommodate about 100 single-family homes plus 50 multifamily units in that mixed residential zoning. Now, if we looked at just the smaller area, which is about six acres, we're actually now looking at about 40 single-family homes and 20 multifamily units that would be accommodated in those two smaller areas. So we wanted to kind of, again, bring this forward to you. The town does have some need to grow. We've gotten some new projections from ABAG, and that is showing that the town will need 20 new housing units by the year 2040. So the regional agency is at least expecting and forecasting some additional housing growth here for Yountville and some need for perhaps some additional land. So I think that is, oh, one more thing. Sorry. One more slide here. So what we wanted to ask you to discuss and kind of gives us some direction on tonight or today is, first of all, whether we should keep that idea of having a program in the general plan, or at least bring it to the community workshop and get some more feedback from the community, on this idea of consider rezoning a portion of the 33-acre North Agricultural Parcel to allow mixed residential development, open space, and parks. And the idea here is actually that the rezoning would happen sometime in the future. It wouldn't even necessarily happen, it could, but it wouldn't necessarily happen when the general plan was adopted, but kind of to hold it in the future so that when and if the town decides that it needs additional land to accommodate future housing development, that this would be a good option and a good place to rezone so that housing development can occur. And one of the ways to do that, we could leave it zoned as agriculture and just have this policy or this program in the general plan, but we could also perhaps designate the parcel or portion of the parcel as, with a new land use designation, which we're calling here a housing reserve designation. And that would allow continued agricultural use with a maximum, and we're proposing a maximum of a .05 FAR, floor area ratio, for commercial facilities for processing or retail sale of agricultural products grown on the premises, and one dwelling unit per 10 acres. That is what's allowed currently in the agricultural zone. And then, and then this idea of the housing reserve is that it would just create an opportunity for housing development in the future. So that is kind of our presentation on this one land use policy issue, and we're happy to answer any questions.
Council, have any questions on this piece? I'll start. My understanding is that identifying where we could put housing would actually satisfy our ABAG requirement or our RENA requirement for those 20 units. We don't have to have them actually built, but if we identify where they can be built, is that accurate?
Well, the housing element right now identifies land to meet your RENA number. So you've got land, most of the, at least the development for the lower income is being satisfied with the Catholic Church property, and then also the French Garden site. So there is, there have been units that, potentially units that are identified there that's satisfying your RENA. Your housing element goes through 2023, and it doesn't need to be revised. Now, if either of those parcels are developed without housing or without the housing that was identified in the housing element, and you don't get the low-income, the units affordable to lower-income households that were identified in the housing element, there may be a need to then go and find additional land in order to ensure that you always have enough land available to meet your housing need. And that's one of these new housing element, housing laws. It's called no net loss. And so this would, by having this kind of in reserve, at least preserve some opportunity so that if in the future you did need additional land, you could fall on this, you know, use this, use this property to satisfy that.
So the two parcels you identified may already satisfy the 20 units that are required by the regional assessment, but this could be an additional number of units that would be over and above that, and if I understood you correctly, if we lost either or both of the other parcels to something other than housing development, we would still potentially satisfy our state mandate for housing if we were to put an overlay here that identified future housing construction?
Yes, it would have to be zoned for, it would have to be rezoned for housing in order to swap out one of the, a site that you, you know, that housing opportunity site that's already been identified in the housing element but is lost essentially. Yes.
So I want to jump in just with a little clarification. The current housing element is 17 units through 2023, and we are satisfied with those two parcels that are zoned for housing. Let's say that one or both of them develop as something other than housing during the cycle. During the cycle, we would be forced to go back and show where we have housing opportunity. If those don't develop and they still present that opportunity, we don't have to present an option until the next update of the housing element. So in 2023, we'd be looking at a way to satisfy the 20 units that we have a projection for now.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Doorman, you have a question?
Yes, thank you. So I kind of have just a background question. We're taking this piece by piece, but when do we, as a council, look at the whole picture? I mean, right now, we're saying, okay, we have a puzzle. We're going to look at this piece, should it be gray or blue? We're going to look at this piece, should it be red or white? What is the whole picture? When do we talk about that?
So we're talking about land use at this meeting, and then if we have the study session next month, which is scheduled for March 27, we'll be talking about the policies and programs for all of the other elements. So you'll be able, you'll have an opportunity to provide feedback and input on all of the elements at that point. Then when we have the draft completed, and that's with all of the text and all of the maps and the policies and programs and the goals in a document, and we have an open house, then we will be bringing it to the council once we get input. Because what we want to do is we want to roll up all of the input that we've gotten and provide, and present to you the final, what the community and the commissions all have agreed that they would like to see in the general plan.
But I can't, and this is just an overarching concern I have about our process, is I understand we're going to ultimately look at everything, but never have we sat down as a council, as a community, as a TAG, and said, here is what we envision for Yountville. Here is the picture. Now, how are we going to make that picture come into focus? We're going to do it, we're going to rezone this, we're going to do this, that. When do we talk about what not only our snapshots, but our motion picture is going to look like, rather than the pieces of it, the individual frames?
I think the best way, Councilmember Doorman, is you will be having that along with the community in the fall when we actually have the draft. So what we're doing, I'm just saying, in terms of building the document, we have to go incrementally to put it together so that you will have the complete document that you will have for, you know, for community discussion, modification, and several meetings through the fall and into the next year if that's what it takes. I mean, I hear what you're saying, but the ability for the staff to propose a draft has to be based on the results and recommendations. So what you're seeing today is the snapshots of the land use, your feedback, and then we put all of them, because there's, as you know, there's multiple elements that go into the general plan, and it ends up being a fairly beefy or meaty document. So I mean, if you have thoughts, we're certainly willing to try to figure out, but, you know, we've also heard through some of the feedback when we've had the community workshops that we were attempting to do too much at one time. So to slow down and try to do it incrementally so people could digest it. So what I would say is what we're attempting to do is we're looking at the chapters, and then we will put it together, and you will see the whole thing, all seven or eight chapters at one point in time, and then there will be community discussion on everything, and you will have looked at it incrementally, and there will probably be some chapters you spend more time on and the policy implications. So you will get there. I guarantee you that.
Let me give you an example of what I think might satisfy your question, just from today and the presentation already. We're looking at what might happen in that agriculturally zoned parcel, and housing may be a piece of that. And to my question, we already satisfy our housing requirements. However, as we go on to another part of the conversation just today, and we look at what might we do or not do on Washington Street, given the east side of the street, might that be rezoned to some level of commercial or retail? That would eliminate some housing spaces there. That might mean we have to go back to visit this ag parcel to say, now we're not complying with our housing element, and we have to reconsider potentially the priority of adding housing in that space. But we have to start somewhere to start evaluating, and as we keep evaluating different things, it may have an effect on what we have already discussed, and we might have to change our opinion about that. But we have to start, as Steve said, in a chapter, on a page of that chapter.
And I guess that's, and I'm going to say this, and then I'm going to move on to my specific questions, but one of the questions up there about this particular piece of property was, quote, "How can it contribute to Yountville's goals?" We have never, as a council, and I do not believe the TAG has, sat down and said, here is a list of Yountville's goals. This is our roadmap of where we're going to get to our destination. That is my concern about this process. I understand that each piece can be discrete and each piece can be adjusted, but to me, the envisioning process is what are Yountville's goals?
And we are evaluating those goals through this process. A goal would be maintaining the 30-foot height limit of all construction. That may be a goal, that may change as a goal, but we have to have the community conversation through TAG and through these types of meetings to find out if that's still a goal for the town. So we're, in my opinion, we are putting those goals together through this process now.
Okay. Thank you. Well, let me then get on to my specific questions about this piece of property. So if we put something marked "housing reserve" on that, what does that mean? Is it a restriction? Can we then say, well, we're not going to ever put housing here?
It is.
What does that mean legally?
It's a designation that says that this land, it recognizes the current zoning of the land as agriculture and its continued agricultural use. By putting the housing reserve designation on the property, it says that we've identified this to potentially meet housing needs in the future, but it will be reevaluated, and it's earmarking the property for something other than agricultural potentially in the future.
And would it also include a mixed-use community with retail there? Or if we say, quote, "housing reserve," is that only dwellings? Could we have an?
Housing reserve, we would have to define that further as part of this process, and it would be a new land use designation in the zoning ordinance. And we have proposed language at the end of your packet as to what that would mean. It is, would be restricted solely to housing, and so it wouldn't allow retail opportunities or other opportunities.
Okay. And then also, along the same lines, if we were to look at the three, the two three-acre callouts for the housing reserve, and if those, let's say those housing reserves became residences, could a winery then go into? could a winery then go into the rest of the property?
It could under the current agricultural zoning designation. Because the overlay, I mean, the, the reserve doesn't change the underlying zoning. So any of those uses, so it could be employee housing or agricultural employee housing or manufacturing facilities. If any of that were to develop before the time that the reserve is further defined for housing and, and used to develop housing, that could happen.
So we could end up, again, taking the two, three-acre parcels. We could end up with the property looking like 40 single-family homes, 20 multifamily dwellings, and a winery.
Potentially, if these areas are called out and the winery isn't built upon those areas, the urban reserve would apply to limited section of the property.
But the answer is yes. We could end up 20, 40, winery.
Yeah.
Okay.
I do want to clarify one thing from earlier too, and that the French Laundry Garden, even though it's designated as housing in our housing element, that property is actually zoned primary commercial where housing is not really allowed use, although it can be, can satisfy our housing need. But it can be developed as any number of commercial properties. And primary commercial is our most permissive of commercial zoning districts. So I just wanted to get that out there so there's clarification as to that.
Could I add one thing as well, Senator? Which is that the housing element is a, is it a five or a seven-year period now?
Eight years.
Oh, it's eight-year, eight-year cycle? Which we're kind of near the beginning of still, but it's still relatively short. The general plan is a kind of a 20-year horizon. So we're trying to set a longer-term sort of vision for what's happening in the town. And so that would encompass, you know, two and a half housing element cycles. It's not just this current, current one we're looking at.
Other questions? Yeah, Councilmember Waller?
I have a question about the, the parcel right now. I'm not sure if we know this or not, but do we know if this is considered prime ag land? And I know there's federal, state, county definitions, but I'd use the one from Cortezia, Knox, Hertzberg. But do we know that?
The good news is it's governed under our definition. So none of those actually technically apply because it's agricultural property in the town limits.
So none, none of that would apply. Okay, my second question is when you were discussing the, this parcel, do you want to add something?
Well, I just want to make sure. By one section, it is defined as prime agricultural land. But again, those particular aspects, it's governed by our zoning. So I just want to make sure we have that clarification.
All right, now I'm confused. Okay, by what aspect is it considered prime ag land?
Yeah, I think it's the. There are federal designations as to agriculture and their designations, and that being the highest designation. So it is fit for agriculture. Then at a local level, on a county level, there are different designations for land use. And we know in the county, there's Ag Preserve and that's to be used for agriculture. Within the town limits, there's more flexibility because the town is held to a burden of accommodating growth and development in the valley, namely, housing. So there are different policies and rules that come into play. That prime agricultural land designation is something that would have to be dealt with, let's say, as we, if, if development were to move forward at some time in the future.
Okay, so, and then right at the north-south line, everything east of that, is that under Measure J and P provisions?
Everything to the east of that white dotted line, yes.
Okay, so we're butting right up against that. Okay, so then my final question is have, when you were considering land use of just the whole town of Yountville, was there any discussion about agricultural buffer zones? About, you know, how we might want to consider that, maybe an MOU? I mean, where I'm kind of getting with this, if we decide, you know, not to put overlay housing on there at this time, is there any way that we could maybe have some negotiation or with the county to have an ag buffer zone? Is something that a lot of small towns like this talk about?
Couple points of clarification. In fact, what I would probably proffer is that the Housing Reserve is creating that sort of a buffer zone. Yountville's very unique because you are correct, Councilmember Moller, there are communities that have an agricultural buffer or a designation. They're usually in between. What's unique in Yountville's case is that we are surrounded by the Ag Preserve. And we go back to the language that the voters adopted in the Ag Preserve, which is that the urban communities, when the voters approved the Ag Preserve, took on the responsibility for the meeting the housing urban needs of the Ag Preserve area. And that's the conundrum, conundrum, excuse me, that we're in, which is we're surrounded by the ag. And yet, we're supposed to, as communities, meet the urban development that has occurred over 50 years. Many people may recall, this is the 50-year anniversary of the Ag Preserve. So we, we, we have a unique challenge as the, as a community surrounded by the Ag Preserve. And we also have this really as we're down to just a few significant parcels left to deal with any potential development or redevelopment.
No, I, I'm thinking you're missing my point. That's, it, it's really about other areas in town. Like one big area that, you know, there was a lot of discussion five, six, seven years ago that was behind Toyon Terrace and Rancho de Napa and it possibly being developed. You know, that would be a great agricultural buffer zone. That may be some negotiation with the county. Just wondering if you had any of those discussions.
The challenge on that is that, that's all in the Ag Preserve. So the, I'm just saying, that property already exists in the county agricultural preserve.
Well, it's privately owned.
Correct. And what I would say to that point.
It wouldn't do any good to negotiate with the county.
Right. What I'm just saying, the property owners are choosing to develop the property in allowance with the county's standards and what's allowed under the Ag Preserve. So I'm just saying, a, a buffer zone within that really does not have any, I, I don't know how to apply it in that particular case when it's already in the agricultural preserve.
Any other questions from council, Vice Mayor?
Are you, are you referring, when you think, when you're talking about a buffer zone, or is it, is it more about performance standards or something having to do with protecting residents from agricultural operations?
No, I'm not worried about that. I'm just trying to protect some of our view corridors that we currently have now. And it was my understanding that with all the lot line adjustments, there were two-acre parcels and it wasn't under Measure P, but maybe I'm mistaken.
Okay, I'm going to try to get us to move along a little bit here. Vice Mayor, I know you have questions.
Well, I have a question. Has the owner of that property expressed an interest in developing that property?
The, we have met with the property owners and the property owners understand the value of the property they have and the potential. They've expressed to us that their great interest is to continue in doing what they're doing. They were also involved. They're a historical family in the development of the Ag Preserve. And they fully understand the commitment that was made in regard to potential future development. So what I would say is they have every intention to continue doing what they're doing, but they're protecting their property rights as well because there's value associated with that.
So are you saying that they are opposed to our changing the?
No, that's not what I'm saying. What I would say is as long as they're able to continue doing what they're doing as a grandfathered use, they're okay. They also recognize that some point down the road, they may want to do something different because they do recognize the, the rights and values that are associated with that property from a development standpoint as opposed to it being in the Ag Preserve.
So they have been consulted about this zoning change?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the council? Anyone in the audience have a question about this item? Okay. What's that? Do we, okay. Come on up to the microphone, please.
Hello? Can you guys hear me if I stand back? Is this okay?
Let's, let's try it.
All right. It's not so much a question as a comment. I don't know if I'm able to make comments.
Okay, yeah, sure. If you can identify yourself also, just so the viewing audience will know.
Sure, thank you. Mike Zagorsak, 1953 Yountville Crossroad. Nice to meet you guys. I, I wanted to start by saying, you know, I'd always been a, I'd say a passive appreciator of Yountville, having lived here six years. And when the envision process started up, it represented an opportunity to be more actively involved. And it's been a real privilege to see this process. I really want to commend the, the planning staff, the action group for making it such an inclusive process and for, for pulling people together and really making sure that we're feeling heard. So I, I went from being a passive appreciator to an active appreciator. And, and I think this session represents that. And it allowed me to really educate myself on the broader context of what's happening. You know, we have a town that's a gem. You know, and I agree with Councilman Doran that there's, there's a real vision behind it that we all feel, even though maybe we haven't yet articulated the latest version of it. And, and how do we preserve what we have? And then we have state requirements. California is growing. Housing needs to be made. And so we have these contextual issues that are now, you know, forcing this discussion on what we do with some of the most precious land we have in the town, which is really representative of why the town is here in the first place. And we have boundaries that were historically put in place that happened to include vineyard. And for me, it became a question of state goals, housing goals, and town goals. And how do we balance the two? Because if you make, my understanding for the, the RHNA was really a function of, California needs to add this many houses. And the Bay Area now needs to have, basically add this many houses. And it just became apportioned evenly across towns. And, and projections were made. And I looked and it said, oh, Yountville's population's going to grow to this, right? So we need, we need more, more housing. And it's sort of a chicken and egg. And, and from, from my standpoint, and I didn't want to come up here and say, okay, well, we're, let's stop development and, and it's everyone else's problem to solve. It's really more about how do we preserve what we have and not increment our way towards something when we look back and say, gosh, you know, we, we did it piecemeal and, and how did we end up where we ended up? How can we challenge ourselves to come up with ways to meet the housing requirements without regressing away from ultimately what, what people value the most? And, and for me personally, the, and I think folks on the north end of town, that, that agriculture, that's the, that's the place that pulls people in. I see tourists, I see locals waving at each other, the access that they have. So it, it is as much as a part of the town as it is part of the, the broader Ag Preserve. And, and again, I didn't want to come up and say, well, you know, I'm against it. It's really more about how do we balance the two? How do we be creative? How do we satisfy the needs? And, and how do we not increment our way towards, in an irreversible situation where, sure, where suddenly if you zone something, suddenly the, the Palissa family is now fielding calls from hungry developers. And so we've actually taken their desire to preserve it and inconvenienced them because we're trying to balance the two things. So ultimately, it's, I, I do think we need to look at the big picture. We have the housing element, which takes us to 2022. It seems that the housing element is somewhat of an override for zoning anyway. So rather than put too many carts before too many horses, can we preserve the integrity of what we have today, keeping, you know, a mindful look at what we know? And it's ultimately a housing thing. That's really what I've learned. And how do we, how do we not get so far ahead of ourselves that we actually create a problem that maybe we, we could have avoided? So that's my, my thoughts on the matter. And again, I really appreciate the opportunity to, to share that perspective and to meet you guys.
Thank you. So just a couple of points of clarification. These are, these are concepts. This is, this does not mean housing is going to be developed on this parcel or any other because we talk about the possibility. I think almost every one of us lives in an area that used to be an orchard of one type or another here in town. So we can't kid ourselves that something that might have, something in the ground in it today may not be developed in the future. And those that own the property have the right to really be the ones that control the future of that. But we also see infill development potentially satisfying our housing needs. We have been required by the state to allow garages to be converted to living units and second stories to be built on garages. Those units may add up to what we need to comply with state law. And that's fine. Then we don't have to worry about this or other parcels. If I and others are successful in getting a few hundred housing units at the veterans home in the town limits, that would satisfy years of our housing needs and we may not need to consider this. But I think what was happening with our planning staff and our process is looking at all the options. We, we then evaluate those options and say, this is maybe the last option we want to consider going forward. But we're identifying what those options are, putting them on a list, and then saying, okay, if we need to go somewhere, this might be the best place to do it. Or this would be the worst place to do it. So I think we're all very sensitive to the idea that we want to preserve all the things that we consider that make Yountville so unique and special and beautiful. So I don't think any one of us is advocating, let's, anything that hasn't been developed, let's develop it one way or another. But we do need to look at what our options are.
I think that makes a lot of sense. I was reminded of a, a statement from a friend of mine is that if you're, if you're not part of the solution, you're part of the problem. And I think that this process really allows for us all to be part of the solution. So I, I thank you for those observations.
Thank you. Any other members of the public? Pam, did you, I see you have your hand up or no? I know Carol does too. All right.
I was going to say the same thing you did about the second unit.
Okay. So then I'll go to Carol. Did you have something to come up? Yes, please. Yeah, you don't get just to talk from your chair, you have to come all the way up. We're all sitting up here in front of everyone, so.
Hi, Carol Schmang at 6468 Washington, now in Soyo, previously Noyo. I just, we, I've gone to one meeting in July that I'm just, had brought my packet from the November workshop that we had done. So I'm just remembering, was that the last envision meeting that the public was invited to go to?
No, we have one in November, December, January, and February.
Well, anyway, just, just a clarification before it goes to the next south ag parcel. I'm just curious, just so I can get my head wrapped around that, that on the north ag, which what you're talking about now, that's where you're looking at more, if the, one of the suggestions is single parcels for single-family homes? And then is it that the church lot in the south ag, Soyo area, that's more the mixed-family proposal? Is that kind of where we're going? Just out of, because in the one proposal, it had single-family and mixed in the north part. So in my mind, I'm kind of thinking, you're looking at it, that this is a huge, beautiful area. So single-family homes, that would be millions of dollars in the area here if that, if the housing needs were such that and part of it of the multi. And then in the south, which is the same photographs, I believe you'll get to on that one, would be more of the mixed-family and not, because it's not as picturesque, if you will?
The proposal is for a mixed residential that allows a variety of housing types, including single-family and multifamily. I'd say the closest neighborhoods would be Washington Park and Yountville Square, both zoned mixed residential.
Right, that's where I lived for 14 years, yeah, familiar with that. Okay.
And then the, the church property, I think, is also mixed residential, is that right? Yes, yes.
Yeah, the church parcel is already zoned mixed residential. And when we talked about it at the workshop in November, we were just looking at other, you know, more intensification, more multifamily or senior housing. So we were, we were, we're not, actually not going to talk about that today because we're not proposing to change the zoning on that parcel.
One thing I'll also add, Steve, before you go on, Carol, this is another good example of where this process is going to evolve. We have a, a higher percentage of the required market rate housing units in our housing element. Where we need to continue to develop is at the lower income levels. That would not mean a multimillion-dollar house. It would mean multifamily, maybe duplexes, maybe, you know, apartment-type buildings would be our requirement as well as our, our desire to reach out to a lower income level of resident. So it's not just about where can we build the most large expensive homes? Because the state has already told us, you can't just build big homes. You need to satisfy different income levels with different types of housing. So this is an example of if we find that we need to satisfy our lower income level housing requirements in this area, that might dictate what our policy is, which is it may not be available for 20 or 30 or 40 homes. It might need to be 50 multifamily housing units instead because we haven't identified another spot in town where that can be achieved. So that's why this is a very sliding scale of policy discussion.
Three comments briefly, if I could. One, I actually think what you're seeing right now in terms of this discussion is a great illustration of the community having a discussion. And the current concept is how much do we need to do? And we don't necessarily. And the current concept is, how much do we need to do? And we don't necessarily need to consider all 33 acres. So I think, you know, as there's been a discussion, you see a moving conversation over what might happen. Secondly, and I'll just echo, this is conceptual. We have a lot of zoning that, in theory, allows certain things to happen. The Catholic Church property has been zoned for a number of years and has never proceeded to move forward with the development, as has the French Laundry Garden parcel. Probably the one thing I would tell everybody is what it's zoned for is not garden. You know, we're going to have, I'm sure people will be uncomfortable when the garden potentially is developed by the property owners, who, you may recall, back in the early 2009, 10 era, had a proposal for a small boutique lodging property. So I fully anticipate in time, we may see that proceed on the primary commercial, which will trigger the loss of housing. More importantly, and one thing I think we just need to get out before everybody gets, one of the most important policy guidelines that the town council has put in place with regards to its general plan is a commitment to protect the ag preserve by not annexing into the ag preserve. We have adopted strict general plan policies that limit, and specifically state that the town will not proactively annex into the unincorporated county with one footnote being the exception of the urban-developed domain Chandon. And I just put that out there because when we talk about right now our footprint, which is what the council is dealing with, is the footprint of Yountville, it's really important that we recognize, we're not attempting to change something the council has had significant discussions and really strongly endorses the actions to protect so that the ag preserve is protected and we remain that island community surrounded by the ag preserve. So I just want to make sure when we're talking about that, that that's clearly understood by everybody.
Yeah, I have something.
Yes.
So the housing element identifies this parcel and states that it should remain zoned agriculture and should not be rezoned in the future. And that's the housing element that's through 2022. When we looked at opportunities as part of the general plan, we wanted to explore what this parcel was capable of. We did some pretty full-blown examples with lodging, more full-scale housing. What we heard at the workshop, at the tag, and at ZDRB is that was really going too far, that something that scaled back so that it's more compact adjacent to the town may make sense in the future. And so our proposed language went from rezone all or apportion to consider rezoning in the future. And that's just a slight change from the existing general plan policy. And the intention is to really honor it as agriculture, to leave it zoned agriculture now, but to provide that opportunity. And it's different, like Steve says, from the Catholic Church property, in that that is already zoned mixed residential. We're not suggesting to rezone it that now, but just to give some flexibility. And I just wanted to make sure that the flexibility was understood, that we're not suggesting going full speed ahead right now with development, but to take off some of the restriction that is on it now, to never rezone it beyond ag.
Thank you. Any other public questions or comments? We're going to have to get you a chair up there.
That's right. Oh, I could just take the microphone back to where I am, or maybe pin mic. Actually, it was a question. The south parcel, was that, when was that rezoned from agricultural to residential? Was that, do we know?
That probably goes back to the 1992 general plan, to be honest. And I think, you know, I see some folks here smiling because, you know, many of you know that, you know, as small a footprint as Yountville was, it has been incrementally developed. It's been developed by, I can go by neighborhood. The Vintage Estate was developed as a master plan unit at one point in time. The Heritage Neighborhood, the Washington Park, and I think the mayor alluded, most all of these were agricultural use orchard or some other at some point when they ultimately became developed. So that property has been zoned that way. I'm not going to give you an exact date because I don't want to give you a false statement, but it's had that kind of zoning designation for a considerable period of time. And, you know, we'll continue to work. But again, the property owner has the ability to continue under our, we have a, we use overlays in a number of areas. Another great example of a zoning overlay is our mobile home parks, where they actually have a senior overlay, but their actual zoning is a mobile home park.
Because I was just curious, there's the, the housing element seems to have its sort of own plan and jurisdiction that has to counterbalance against the general plan. So the only reason I asked was whether or not that, as the housing element evolves based on some of the state requirements, which seem to update on a seven-year cycle, you have to plan for 20 years. So I was just curious if there's stipulations that says, you know, as the housing element gets revised, based on the principles of the general plan, whether certain things are revisited in the context of that?
The good news, bad news is that the state will let us go longer on a general plan. So we can have a broader perspective and a longer-term horizon. They're actually putting us into a narrower seven, eight-year cycle, and we have to come back. And there are, I mean, there are consequences to the town not having an accepted housing element. And I will also point out, for those of you that are concerned, there is a significant movement in the state right now to restrict local government authority and control on housing. Just want to get it out there. We've lost a lot of local control as it is on accessory dwelling unit size, streamlining. And there are two significant measures that, you know, and I will say it because I'm not in the planning field directly, but I am, there's a lot of communities that haven't addressed housing. And as a result, certain segments of the state legislature are attempting to take away local government authority on housing and make it more perfunctory, which is not what a lot of our residents are going to like, when we have to tell them, I'm sorry, but the state law says you can do this. So I mean, we're trying to really, what I would say is, the community of our nature, we're really trying to make sure that we do our best to comply with the housing policy goals so that we don't have that authority taking away from us.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Okay. Vice Mayor, another question, then hopefully we can get past item one after an hour.
I just want to be, have a clarification, that if you do put the overlay for two housing developments on this agricultural land, does that restrict that for the foreseeable future in case someone else purchases that land and wants to develop the whole parcel?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. I think we can move forward.
Okay. So what we were looking for from the council is, we would like to bring this forward in our next community workshop scheduled for April, with this idea that we would have a, you know, kind of test this idea of a policy that says to consider rezoning a portion of this parcel for housing development. And we would probably use this slide when we showed it to the community and get, to get their feedback. So where, so the question for us is just, is the council supportive of that? Or do you think we should just not present that question to the, to the community? Or should we modify that question for the community? So that's what we're looking for.
So I'll ask as succinctly as possible, each of us, to answer that. Councilman Dorman, do you have a thought on that?
Yes, thank you. So I would be in favor of bringing it to the community, but I would like to see that include a discussion of policy LU 10.3, which talks about the elements we look at when we rezone agricultural land. And I would like to see that include a discussion of our proposed definition of housing reserve, particularly the last sentence, "The designation allows for agricultural use while limiting the development of land uses which may conflict with future planned use of the area." I would like for all three of those to be brought forward together and explained as a unit, and where they contrast and conflict or fit together.
Councilman Durham?
So the question is just this one right here?
Correct.
Right. Yes, we're just dealing with this one right now.
With no other consideration to the others.
That will, to follow, be to follow.
All right, very good. Then that's fine.
To move it forward?
Yeah, to move it forward with the community.
Councilman Mueller?
I think I might be the only one in disagreement here, but I just feel I have a sacred right to protect this land, and I'm really not in support of it. And part two is that I haven't really, I totally understand how this would work, and it would just be a potential overlay, but I haven't really heard anything compelling at this time from the state and where we have possible infill, that this is really needed at this time. We can always change zoning later. You can update a general plan four times a year. So if I really saw something, then I would bring it up. But right now, I'm just not willing to give up that land for housing.
Vice Mayor?
I'm concerned that in some of the other zoning, we will be losing housing, part of the housing element. So I'm inclined to save just the overlay and only a consideration of this. But I, in some ways, agree with Councilmember Mueller. I feel like that is the one green part, I mean, the greenest part of our little town. And so I'm torn. But I do understand that housing, you know, housing is under such pressure that we all have to have, you know, we have to approve accessory units. So I don't know, I'm torn, but I would support the overlay with the condition that it not, you know, that it would have to come back, obviously, to the council and to the ZDRB and in the future, whenever it was considered.
And I'll also clarify again, we're not putting this overlay on this property today. We're talking about whether we want to bring this for discussion in a future community meeting. And so absolutely, yes. It doesn't have anything to do with whether I feel like we should have housing on this parcel or not. We should have this as part of our conversation. I think Councilmember Dorman's comments about including some of the other policies as a collective conversation makes sense. But as I said in my comment earlier, let's not kid ourselves. I think, well, Councilmember Durham doesn't, but I wonder if everyone else on the council lives in a parcel that used to be an orchard. So I don't own this property, so I'm not going to tell this property owner they can't even consider an option in the future. But I do want to hear from our residents what their priorities are, if they feel like housing is the highest and best use if it changes from Vineyard, or if something else is a priority for the community. So hopefully that, all, those five comments give you enough guidance to go forward.
Yes, it does. Thank you.
Okay.
My house is on the former garbage collection area of Yountville, just so we're clear.
Former?
Yeah, feels like it. Yeah, not now.
Okay. So item two?
Okay, item two. So the next major land use issue that we discussed at the, it was at the community workshop, we did this one again in kind of small groups and got some feedback from the community. And we've also discussed it with the tag and with the ZDRB. So I'm going to turn it over to Peter to kind of walk you through the scenario, development scenarios.
This is sort of the really different, hopefully refreshing, set of questions, I think, around this study area. Instead of being, I think, about housing, this is about place-making, quality of life, and economic vitality. What is, what do people in Yountville want their downtown area to look and feel like? And what kind of offerings would they like to have here? So we looked at this small study area that is directly across Washington Street from Community Hall, with the V Marketplace and all of the associated parking behind the Railway Inn, north of the Villagio, and south of Vintage Estate, and between Washington Street and the highway. The reason we looked at this property is that it is sort of, it is, it's the, it's the, it's most of what is zoned primary commercial in Yountville that isn't already sort of developed with buildings. And the reason it's not really so much developed with buildings is because it has all that parking on it. And so it feels like an opportunity for something that is more town-like. And we wanted to explore options of what that might, what that might mean. So these kinds of slides are going to look familiar because we took a similar approach to evaluating, what is our experience of this part of Yountville now? And then what kind of opportunities might it suggest? This diagram is intending to show sort of, especially the conditions right along Washington Street. We're interested in what parts of Washington Street feel like they have a sort of a, an active edge. And that is where you're seeing those solid red lines along Beauchamp and the community center. You really feel like there's this engagement between the building and the street, the sidewalk. That's kind of what we mean by active edge, where there's sort of a nice energy that passes between the businesses or the uses and the street life. The hatching is showing where we, where we feel when we're on the street, that that edge kind of fades away. And the reason for that is that there's parking lots or landscaping. It feels passive, and it loses that energy. That's sort of our insight there. So we're interested in that social environment along Washington Street. We were also interested in some of the other properties that are maybe inherent to that property as a whole. And one of those is, we were aware of the views that are provided across that property, particularly from Washington Street toward the hills, but also actually from, and you can see that in that middle, that middle picture, but also actually from the highway into town. Interestingly, I think Yountville doesn't have, doesn't make very much of an impression from the highway. And there's a sort of a fleeting glimpse across that parking lot toward the V Marketplace. And I think that's the beginning of something special and that maybe could be built on. And then there's the sort of undeveloped land, which could become the basis for, you know, gradual, commercial, mixed-use infill development that continues to support the economic vitality of the town and the magnetism that Yountville has, which it needs to continue to sort of grow and change, to, I think, make that magnetism last. So this is sort of a diagram of some of those conditions that I talked about. Those arrows are representing what we're, what we're seeing as the key view corridors from Washington Street into the hills, and then from the highway into the site. And then the white buildings are buildings that already exist. And the purple buildings, in this case, and the yellow and green spaces, those are a conceptual diagram of what could, what sort of a development pattern that could take place on this property that might have some positive reinforcing effects on downtown Yountville as a whole. And I kind of want to walk through that without getting into too much detail. And I think the key point is, it's conceptual. This is not a development proposal that anyone's put forward. We're just trying to put together, I'm going to use that puzzle analogy again, trying to put together a puzzle that we liked and sort of test that, sort of, sort of use, you know, see what, see how the community responds to something that isn't there right now. And so that we could sculpt a plan and plan policies toward creating this, like, a desirable outcome, whether it's this or whether it's maybe something else. We looked in some more detail at some of the conditions that different, different ones of these potential building sites would create. So here we're seeing the property that is directly north of this, what is this new business? It's burgers and ice cream and?
Platform A.
Platform A. So directly north of Platform A, there's that parking area, I think it's associated with the Grosinger Estate or the Vintage Estates. If that were to develop as a one-story building, we're imagining something kind of like Stuart Sellers. That would create more of an energy across Washington Street with the businesses that are already there. And you can see in that little cross-section on the bottom, how the scale of a new one-story building would relate to Beauchamp across the street. Here's a sort of a two-story option. This is also, this is, this would be allowed under current zoning, which would have an office space on top. And we have some examples of how, the types of buildings that this could produce in Yountville. Looking now to the south, the site where the Railway Inn and the parking lot is now, we're not saying the Railway Inn should go away, but if it were to go away, and there were some kind of a more of an intensive building there, there would be an opportunity to have a better relationship with Washington Street and with the Community Hall, and to create some kind of a sense of enclosure of the street, and also openings into new courtyards. courtyard spaces and so on. And that's what we're trying to show here with these variety of kind of indoor/outdoor commercial spaces. I think a key to any kind of intensification on this downtown study area is that where's all the parking going to go? And I think parking is something that right now is really in flux because the whole model of the way people are getting around is changing to some extent. But we're assuming that there's still going to be a need for parking. And so when the parking lots are built on, that parking needs to become more dense. So we're showing here a two-story garage with buildings on either side that give it an urban, livable urban presence. So it doesn't feel like a garage from the edges that you're approaching it from. You have offices, you have retail that kind of continue to add vitality to the downtown area. There are other things that can be done to the edges of the garage, green walls, green roofs, and so on, that can make it blend in with the community. I think, I think, I think everyone would be clear that a garage would be sort of the kind of building that would need a great deal of design attention to make sure that it worked. But the plus sides could be, you know, rooftop gathering spaces and opportunities for some kind of walkable development around it. So I will turn it back to Christine, and if there's more questions, because I kind of, I feel like I kind of rushed through it, but I may have bored you all, so. But if there's any more questions, we can kind of walk through that in more detail.
Before we go on, Councilmember Durham, question?
Can you tell me if we still need parking with that same need? Is it the same need, one for one? Or do those numbers change, given the flux?
We tried to replace that parking. I think we came up a little bit short. We tried, I should say, we tried to replace the parking and provide parking for the new uses that would also bring in new parking demand. And I think we came up a little bit short with the replacement plus additional.
And what were those numbers based on?
Based on the current, I believe they were based on the current parking requirements in the primary commercial zone.
And to that spirit, you're going to?
Hold on just a second. I think the question that we've been going around and around about is, should we be evaluating our parking ratio based on, you know, new generations of drivers not owning cars, people using ride sharing? So is our required parking appropriate for the types of future uses that you're describing?
Yeah, I mean, I think that's a really important point. And actually, what I would want to say most importantly maybe is that we would be assuming some kind of a shared parking or parking district, which would create parking efficiency, which isn't there right now when every business has its own parking lot. I think that would be fundamental and probably the easiest thing to bite off. Then there is also, I think it would be relevant to try to dig into what is the future of parking and to right-size your parking requirements according to current needs.
Right, so the way that we've presented this is that we are proposing replacement parking under the current standard. We realize that we're in a changing environment. And the way that the parking garage is presented with the high ceilings is that it's ultimately convertible into building space and an active use in the future when and if cars go away entirely. But it creates this phased approach and a way to deal with what is really uncertain at this point.
So I think what you're talking about is having an open mind to the idea, let's all assume that none of us want to see a three-story concrete block of parking that is the way of the seventies and eighties and whatever. And if we were to consider something, it would be scalable to, I think what you were just saying, Sandra, is you build the levels high enough that they can be converted into retail space, for example, and the rooftop may go from a parking rooftop to an active park-like setting with chairs and plants and whatever, so that it's not really, it dissolves away from being a parking structure and evolves into a multi-level recreational and retail space.
If I could, I want to share a couple of thoughts before we get too focused and dwell dwell on the parking garage and structure. One, you're going to see a proposed policy that just talks in general about a more flexible, more creative approach to parking. You're going to see that policy when we get there. But what I want to really talk about, the, in the early community workshops, we heard from the residents that we could use more business, we could use more retail. So the challenge of the staff and the team here was, how do we create more retail? We don't have vacancies. So the thought here is, and I don't, the reason I'm kind of showing this one, we may be able to do a lot of infill development, subterranean parking, we may be able to go to valet parking, use different things, we may not get to the need for a parking structure. But also, if a parking structure was developed, there is technologies now that make it blend in and it wouldn't stand out. But the real question is, there's a trade-off. If we want more retail space, more opportunity for businesses that aren't what they currently are, we've got to look at doing something different along that Washington Street corridor. And I think that's really the question we're asking, is are we willing to consider some of the infill development and then possibly this type of development? If that's, that's what I would say is the bigger takeaway question.
Right. Other questions from Council, Councilmember Mueller?
Yeah, the question I've had for a long time, I see your little dashed red lines around your study area, but this single parcel actually extends all the way down to Velagio. So is this during a general plan update, would this be the time to have the discussion about having one parcel turn into multiple parcels in case there is support for something like this?
That property is not one parcel. It's under one ownership, but it's currently five parcels.
Okay, so the red area, is that, how many parcels are there? So there are multiple parcels all the way along?
There are five parcels that make up the Vintage Estate.
So, but is this one right here?
V Marketplace extends generally down to that, the left corner where you see the laundry facility? Or not?
I'm trying to get back here.
And then it transitions to, the Velagio Inn and Spa is on a separate parcel, Grosinger is on a separate parcel, up to the north, and then Vintage Estate is a separate parcel, and the Vineyard is a separate parcel. So that identifies all five of them.
All right, thanks.
I'd also note that this study area, rather than being tied to a specific parcel, also includes the Whistlestop area or JCP Village area as well as the Wine Train. So it's really looking at, for lack of a better term, this downtown study area, which actually includes multiple parcels and multiple?
I just didn't know it had multiple parcels. I was thinking, this would be the time to do that, but I didn't know there was five already, so that begs my question, thanks.
And Nathan, do you say the study area includes the Wine Train?
I said the Whale Ray Inn, sorry, is what I meant, the Railway Inn.
So only on the east side of the highway is what we're talking about right now?
Right now, this study area that we're focusing right here is just what's outlined there.
Okay. Any questions from the audience on this particular piece? Yes.
Hi. Devin Avery, sixty-four, sixty-eight, Washington Street. So on this last little subject that you guys were talking about, and sorry, Steve's left the room because he's just getting a cookie. The comment, if I understood you right, and help me, that you had said, residents are always saying, we want more retail. So you're responding by suggesting that perhaps we have more density or things are in there, sorry. Lost my train of thought. So what, my question is, we're only going to have so many residents, no matter what, even if we do down the road, that north parcel. We still don't have enough residents to really sustain a lot more retail. So I'm not sure I understand your connection thereof. We want more retail, the residents say we want more retail.
Well, I'm just being honest with the feedback that we've had from folks that they would like to see more space for services, doctor's office.
Can we sustain those services?
I would say based, I mean, I don't know the answer to that, so I'm not going to promise somebody something, but what I will?
Okay, so I don't understand where we're going if we're making a lot of plans to expand our retail when we're also saying we can't sustain that retail.
What I'm just saying is, there was community, you know, this is a concept in response to community feedback that said, we'd like to see more resident-serving, resident-focused. So the idea, and again, this is a concept, the council may or may not, but the question is, what could we do to create more retail or office space so that the dentist or whatever? And I'm just saying that it's, that's where the thought came from.
Well, and let me just add to that. I think a lot of the folks that are in this room were here for that little straw poll night where we were able to sit here and click away on what we liked and what we maybe didn't like as much. And there were definitely people in that audience that said they wanted to see, and I don't know about more retail, a broader diversity of retail, but this is an example of, okay, if this, then that. So if people say they want a diversity of retail, either it means more retail spaces, which would require more parking, or it would mean changing retail that exists to something else. And so this is, this is kind of the reality of these concepts. So if somebody's saying, we want more office space, okay, that's going to replace some other business, or we have to add a building somewhere, or you can't create office space. So if the office space is a priority, then the impacts will be, there has to be some level of parking that supports the office space or whatever other retail space there is. And if we say, we don't want more parking spaces, then we say, okay, then we can't expand the commercial retail spaces unless we get really creative with something else. Pam, you got a comment or a question?
Pam Reeve, sixty-eight, eighty-seven, Jefferson Street. I remember the comments at several workshops talking about, gee, I wish we had more local serving businesses. And I think that's been the hue and cry for, I don't know, thirty years. But the suggestions of this kind of infill where we have more buildings built by property owners who want to maximize their profits, I don't see that as a solution to providing what we want, which is local serving businesses. I see that there's a lot of emphasis on the idea that it will stimulate more visitor happiness. But even that I would question because what people come here for is not the urban experience. They come here to breathe in and out and have vistas of beautiful scenery. And the idea that all of that space on Washington Street is dead space is just a very small look at that space. That space is allowing this broader vista to emerge. And I feel like three-story buildings or two-story buildings or one-story buildings in those areas, or encouraging them in those areas, takes away from what this town is, which is a wide spot in the road, not an urban city. It never has been much of a full-service town. It's been a wonderful place to live and to do activities that connect to nature. But the urban experience is not what we're about or ever have been about. Most people who lived here from the very beginning used to call it the armpit of the Napa Valley because it was so underdeveloped and so not a town. So when we look at, what do we want to see Yountville in twenty years or whatever, I think people who are here were attracted to the openness and the soft edges of town. The more we harden up those edges, the less desirable it becomes. And I think our visitors would also have a different opinion of what they're visiting. So yeah, we can maximize and create lots of things to do, but I don't think that's really what the townspeople want, and I don't think that's what the visitors want.
And I will disagree with some of your statements, Pam. These are not requests by property owners to develop these parcels. This is coming from the community feedback that we've all been getting about what the community is interested in considering. So we're not responding to the Vintage Estate ownership saying, we want to add buildings to add more of a visitor experience. We're responding to your neighbors, our neighbors, who are bringing concepts up and we are presenting those concepts.
Yes, but I understand what you're saying. But the thing is that when you build the buildings, we have no control as a town over what uses go into those buildings. We've had lots of promises from lots of wine tasting to have retail. The kind of retail they give is not really what we had in mind. And it will be the same for any of these buildings that are built. The owners can, you know, have a control over that, not the town. If the townspeople want true control over that, we should buy a piece and develop it as a co-op business building. Or the other idea is to rezone Mr. Woodson's property right near what used to be the old post office and say, local serving, resident-scaled commercial. Or allow more home occupations that have visitors. There are a lot of artists in town who would love to have their gallery be in their home. And why not do that and allow categorically, as we do, office space, maybe up to four visitors a day to have a home occupation? That will provide more local serving business than any of these kind of new types of building on that street.
Okay, and Kim, I'll have you come on up to the microphone. We're talking about this particular section of downtown right now. There are other parts of town, just like when we talked about the north and Ag parcel. We're not talking about the entire town right now. This is a specific commercial zone that we're evaluating, so Kim.
May I, may I jump in first?
Yeah.
We were able to get through some of the case studies, but not all of them. And we haven't been able yet to present the policies that flow from what we've heard at the community workshops and the TAG. So you're hearing half the story, and we'd like to be able to explain how it's all interconnected and how we're proposing policies that deal with massing and some of the more rural shapes that are preferred around here, that how we are able to preserve the views, how we could deal with this idea of infill but preserving the building uses for things that are more desirable. So if you're ready, I'll turn it back to?
I want to give Kim a chance to respond to the conversation that's been happening, and then we'll go on.
Kimberly Cook, just a quick comment to counterbalance that there are a lot of people who think that adding some single-story quaint, beautiful little retail shops in that area is a good idea.
Thank you. Any other public comment real quickly before, yeah, Carol, and then we'll want to move on to the, what Sandra was just describing.
Carol Schaming again, just a couple quick things, just to, one thing is, I think the forefathers, I don't remember the year that it was decided that Highway 29 was going to go around Yountville and not go on Washington Street? And thank goodness, they did that. Does anybody know the answer when that happened?
Nineteen fifty-nine.
Okay. Because our first visit here was in ninety-three and it was all done. But I mean, that's, to me, that's the beauty, and that's why we moved here from Chicago in two thousand and one and bought, in Washington Park, new in ninety-seven, because of that. And I worked in Santa Elena for fifteen years, and we're the envy from friends that we have there in Napa, Calistoga Valley area, of having this corridor where it's not busy. So it's the walking area and the parking. And I know that the parking is on the weekends in front of Bouchon and Vintage is very busy behind Velagio area. But for the local residents that are answering the questions about requests of business and things, I think many locals that use the dentist or do different things to Boyd or go to Ranch Market, people utilize here that live here full-time, walking, taking the trolley. And so the parking garage concept seems a little obsolete, it doesn't, you don't want to wreck that green space that we see and love. And I just wanted to make sure that in one of our, that one of the notes that on the November workshop meeting that we had, table discussions, I remember specifically our table group, which had two TAG members at that, we talked about a parking area, not on Washington corridor, but if they needed to put something, the south lot, south mixed area, which is the church lot, that perhaps a parking garage to facilitate visitors, people coming in to Washington Street to use that. And if there's a trolley system set up that you could take people back and forth, tourists coming to town, that would settle a parking issue that predominantly is Friday, Saturday, Sunday. On the weekdays, you can go to Bouchon at two o'clock in the afternoon and walk in to get a cup of coffee, bakery. So you, you know, there's a need? So, you know, there's a need on the weekends a lot, but I think it could be settled, not in this corridor you're talking about. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other public, so Sandra or Christine, next?
Yeah, I sort of, I think I stopped too soon, and I should have fleshed out our studies a little bit more. I was sensing that I was over-talking, but I think it would have been helpful, actually, if I had presented a little bit, a little bit more on this. I want to sort of finish it. Because it does speak to some of the concerns that I'm hearing, that we're all hearing, about the urban scale and how new buildings could feel Yountville-like and so on. We tested a couple of different options here. Here on Washington Street, we looked at options that are fully within current zoning. So they're within that thirty-foot height limit on either one or two stories. In this part of the lot that is further removed from Washington Street, we tested what a set of two-story buildings could look like, and also what they would look like if they rose to three stories on one of those buildings. And you can see it's in the same scale as the V Marketplace. So we really did want to test because the current height limit is thirty feet. Could we go up to a higher building that is the scale of the V Marketplace? And if so, under what conditions? What could that building look like? How could we make that building feel consistent with the scale and the character, the sort of grain of the town? And we saw that Maison Florie, which is right up Yount Street a little bit, it does have that three-story form, but it's, you know, it's fifty feet wide or forty feet wide, that building. And so how do you create steps-down and sort of terraced building forms that can create a pleasing urban environment that has some height variation? And also maybe allows for some opportunities for the kinds of businesses that we were hearing residents wanting more of, services specifically, I think. The medical offices, the insurance agencies, the sort of the things that everyone needs and can make Yountville feel more complete. So that's the part-
Just quickly, if you could go back to that slide, I want to maybe help clarify what exactly this is telling us. So if I'm reading it correctly, the grayed-out space to the right, or above and to the right of the colored area, is currently the parking lot and basically where Mini Model Bakery and part of the Railway Inn and the parking area for JCB Village is. And that gray area would potentially, in your concept, be built out into some use that is, instead of that being parking and part of the Railway Inn.
Right.
Behind it, then, would be in that lower area, you have that elevation showing a multi-level parking structure over the entire one-level parking area that's now south of V Marketplace.
Right.
And you would screen all of that on either side, north and south, with buildings that currently don't exist. And whatever is on the front or Washington side of that two-story structure would be the JCB Village and what's currently the Railway Inn. And in this context, it looks like the Railway Inn may or may not exist going forward in this concept. So is that an accurate depiction of what we're looking at?
More or less, yeah. But I want to stress again, this is sort of, this is, it's totally conceptual. And the point, the purpose of this is to say, how can we create development regulations that produce the outcomes that we want? So it's not to say, we're going to, we're going to say this exact, or something even close to this development happens. It's to say, what are the factors that we want to try to control about a future development pattern?
But this would potentially, conceptually, allow a two-level parking structure that is almost invisible from Washington Street.
Right.
And would be screened appropriately on the Highway twenty-nine side, so it doesn't look like a parking structure.
Exactly.
And it would not, as Carol's just pointing out, be a parking lot or even buildings along, right along Washington Street that squeezes that experience.
Right.
Okay.
And it also leaves that, the parking area, that whole sort of back half of the lot would continue to be a surface lot and would help to provide that open sense from passersby on the highway.
A couple other things that I think-
It's, so the colored area is only half of the entire parking lot on the south side. So right where the walkway through the middle of the parking lot is, that's where this image is stopping.
And again, I want to stress, for our purposes, we're really looking at, how might we create additional office, commercial, retail in concert with some of the concerns that we heard? What we haven't presented yet is, we also heard from the community that there should be limitations on what that might be, and how do we do a better job of trying to get the type of uses that some of the residents were talking about? Because we heard about concerns about, how do I make sure that my hairdresser doesn't lose the space therein? A lot of services, the dentist, and I'm just going to say, we've heard this. This is a concept. It may or may not pass, just like we've seen concepts also with subterranean parking that could meet. But it really was here an idea of, if we are going to try to create more commercial and office space, if that's a community interest, and I'm going to stress the if, then how might we go about doing, where might it go, how might it look? And now, I think Sandra can talk about some of the policy concepts because we're not suggesting this happens as an automatic right, but we thought that perhaps there should be some conditions so that the community got some of the community benefits they were expecting out of that.
Well, we have them in our presentation here, so let's-
So I'll move forward, okay. So again, the idea here was to present to the community some development scenario options so that we could get their feedback. And the feedback that we heard at the community workshop from the small groups, there were a lot of people who were kind of in support of this idea, who there was support for some three-story buildings, particularly if it was set back in the site and wasn't right up against the road. There was some support for parking structures, or for a parking garage, if it was also set back and appropriately screened. There were some other ideas that had come up from the community workshop, like putting the parking garage at the south end of town, also doing subterranean parking garage as well. So we got a lot of good ideas from the community workshop. And then we brought that, those ideas forward to the TAG and had, again, we had probably a full meeting on this particular issue. And what we really wanted to do was to create some new policies that could be in the general plan that would help to guide development in this area. And so the first one that we came up with was this idea of building massing. And this policy would really guide development all throughout, not just the downtown, but really in all of the commercial areas. And the idea here is that, it says that "All buildings shall utilize massing techniques that mitigate heavy or bulky forms, such as modulating building mass, partial upper stories, setbacks for upper story volume, variety of roof forms, do not obstruct view corridors, and are compatible with adjacent structures to ensure that new buildings do not overwhelm their sites or their neighborhoods." So we felt that this kind of a policy would really help to guide the development if, for example, those buildings, as we were showing on Washington Street, were to be developed. We also, and that kind of works in, with these other policies here. So there are new policy, or actually kind of a revised policy, because there is a policy in the existing general plan about building height. And so this one is to slightly revise, which says, "Permit three-story buildings only to the west of Washington Street, between California Drive and Humboldt Street, and two-story buildings for the remainder of town, provided the development considers the neighborhood context, including uses, view corridors and setbacks, and that buildings adhere to the requirements for massing." So again, that's referring back to that policy that we just discussed about massing. So this is a way to kind of incorporate that development scenario that we had talked about, so that that would be allowed, but it would be guided by these policies. And then an associated program here would be that we would need to amend the design standards ordinance in order to allow this three-story development. We're talking about specifically this area that's in figure X, which is this area here outlined in red. And it includes the area across the highway that is the wine train area.
If I could just make a comment, we recently had to go through a discussion that was defining stories, one-story, two-story, three-story. I'm just wondering if we need to literally identify foot heights with these stories? Because there was some debate about what constitutes a two-story and what part of the building is measured for that. I think Sandra and Nathan could help identify what those specific numbers were that we reached out at, whether it was the state guideline or our own local guidelines for that.
And that is something that would be included in revision of the design ordinance and the zoning ordinance. And that is, there is a policy or program in the draft general plan where we would go back and do all of those revisions once the general plan was adopted. So the general plan, we're really talking about high-level policies and programs in order to, that say, like, the program says, "We will revise the zoning ordinance and the design review ordinance in order to incorporate these new policies." So that's something that would be, that would be addressed in that process.
But I think it's important that during the community discussion, that the residents understand when we say three stories, what does that mean? Because my guess is, the average person thinks three stories is the outside top of the building. And if we're identifying three stories as a plate height that nobody sees from the outside, that's an engineer term, then that's a different thing, potentially.
Okay. So the other, I think we have two more here. So a new policy is about floor area ratio bonus. The idea here is to provide a floor area ratio bonus for retail professional office and service uses that increase business diversity and offer benefit to residents. This would not apply to restaurant and alcohol, alcohol or cannabis-related uses. Now, there already is an FAR bonus that's currently permitted in commercial districts for residential and professional uses. So this policy kind of already, it covers an existing, an existing bonus. It's in the zoning ordinance. But then, this would help the town, the town could consider extending that FAR bonus to primary commercial district, for example, for non-food, non-wine retail uses through this, through this new program.
Do we have at least a question from Councilor Dorman now? Do you want to wait until you get through all your policies and then ask questions?
Yeah.
Okay.
Why don't we do that, and then we'll go back? Because we want to kind of consider them all holistically. And then this would have, the adjacent program here would be to amend, as I was saying before, to actually amend the design ordinance standards to allow this FAR bonus for retail and service uses. And we would identify the area where we wanted to allow that in order to encourage retail uses. And then finally, we had a lot of discussion about the parking structure, and we ended up with this new policy on parking efficiency. And it says, "Allow greater use of measures that maximize the amount of onsite and offsite parking, including valet, tandem, parking structures, and other creative solutions, provided they consider neighborhood context, view corridors, setbacks, screening, and massing." So it's kind of a general policy that would allow that type of a parking structure that was, that was shown in that development scenario if a proposal came forward. And that's what the town supported. So again, what we're looking for is, these are the policies and programs that we've brought. We went through the TAG, and then we brought them to the zoning and design review board and got their feedback and kind of adjusted, revised some of the wording in order to address their concerns as well. So we're looking for feedback from council so that we can then bring these forward to the community, at the community workshop, and get additional feedback from the community. So if there's anything that you think that we should revise, or if we've missed something that you think we should also be addressing with the community, we'd like to hear about that.
Yeah, we'll start with questions. Councilor Dorman?
Thank you. So some general overview-type questions. We keep talking about view corridors. Do we mean just the defined view corridors, or do we mean when we walk down the street right now, we can see the mountains?
Yeah, the view corridors are actually, they are defined. We have specific ones. They're defined in the general plan. And so they're called out, and we have a map, and they're mapped as well. So there are, in the workbook right now, we have some view corridors. And they are specifically identified in the, in the plan.
And so I would ask, whenever we take this to the public, assuming we take it to the public, let's be clear with them. A view corridor is down the Mulberry Extension. A view corridor is not, you are standing in front of Bouchon, looking south, and you can see the mountains. That's not a view corridor, and that's not protected. That's not taken into account in any of these policies and programs being proposed. So I really want to be fair and clear with our residents on that.
Okay.
Secondly, we talk about density and intensity. What is the difference in those?
So, well, typically, we use the term density to apply when we're referring to how residential uses. So density is the number of housing units per acre. And that can be gross acre or net acre. So a density is ten units per acre. When we use the term intensity, we're talking about the intensity of commercial development, or I should say, non-residential development. And that is typically expressed in a floor area ratio. So FAR, floor area ratio, refers to intensity.
So if we're saying that we want to increase intensity, we are saying that we want to allow more building per square foot of lot?
We're-
Or more usable space per square foot of lot?
We're actually not proposing to change the floor area ratio in any of the zoning districts except for, to provide this floor area ratio bonus that I just talked about in that one program, which would be to increase, to give the council the option to provide a point-one-five FAR bonus for specific retail uses in the commercial districts.
And that is anywhere in town?
Well, it would be defined, and what we're talking about is the primary commercial district.
Okay, because as it's, as it's written now,
Right.
It doesn't say anything except it-
It's the area here in the program, it says, "The area shown in figure X."
Okay, well, I'm looking at eight-point-five.
Figure X is essentially most of the downtown area west of Washington Street.
Where does it say figure X in there?
Right here.
Right here, sorry.
Now, where does eight-point-five say figure X? Where does it cross-reference figure X? Is my question-
It was on the slide. It's not in the handout.
Eight-point-five A.
So it's, the figure X is this figure that's here. It's that area that's bounded by the red. So it's identified-
It has figure X reference.
Okay, but eight-point, eight-point-five, where we are talking about, and I'm not wordsmithing it, this is a concept question. Eight-point-five, where we are talking about floor area ratio and a bonus, we do not reference figure X. Is that correct?
It's, the program is right up there, eight-point-five.
Eight-point-five A.
Eight-point-five A.
Right, and that's talking about amending our design ordinance.
Right.
So those possibly should be combined to make it clear, in my view. But again, so then, so let's move on to the proposed FAR bonus. Conceptually, we say we will provide a bonus, which I guess, conceptually, that's mandatory, to businesses, services, et cetera, that increase business diversity and offer benefit to residents. I have heard people on the council say, "Every business in town is a local-serving business." Conceptually, I have an issue with saying, "We're going to offer it to businesses that benefit residents." Because some residents are benefited by all businesses, some residents, not so much. So I would just put that out as a concept on the FAR bonus. Moving on to some other questions. Why, I mean, have we looked at what we could offer in the way of additional businesses and services if we did two stories rather than three stories? Did we put that out to the community? Have we heard that from the community? I mean, certainly, if we put, where we're proposing possibly a three-story, if we put a two-story-
We took both of those options to- We took both of those options to tag and the ZDRB. And the idea was that with two-story buildings, that second level could be office or residential and serve a need we don't see greatly represented in town. And that going up to a third story just allows more opportunity for those types of uses, provided that the buildings are constructed in a way that's consistent with massing, which really looks to center building mass in the center and avoid the verticality from the street that would be potentially considered inconsistent with...
So we could get the same idea, conceptually, with two-story buildings?
Correct, and I would also...
We would just not have as much space to work with, to work the concept in?
Correct, yeah. And I'd also say that the concept of the bonus determination, certainly, the council would be asked to craft, "What are the policy guidelines for that determination?" Because that approval is a discretionary request, the way, much like it is currently now in the commercial FAR, and it's not an automatic entitlement. So if we're moving forward with that, that would be an opportunity for broader policy development in terms of, you know, what would the criteria, what is the community, what are the council looking for in order to make that determination? And again, these are concepts based on trying to address some of the themes that we've heard.
Thank you.
I want to, I'm sorry, I just wanted to be sure that I was being clear about the difference between a policy and a program. So the policy is just, it's setting a broad policy for the town. And the program is what we use when we actually need to do, the town needs to do something in order to implement that program, that policy. So that's why there are these two on this slide. There's a policy and then the program. Now, the program itself, just simply, it says, "To amend the design standards ordinance to allow an FAR bonus for retail and service uses in the area shown in Figure X." But it doesn't go any further than that. What we're not doing is actually writing an ordinance. The ordinance itself, there's, we still want to allow enough flexibility so that when a draft ordinance is brought back to the ZDRB and back to the council, there can be some room and flexibility to discuss exactly what that FAR bonus should be and what uses, exactly which uses within, you know, retail and service uses should be allowed. So that's the idea here. It provides, provides an overall policy direction for the town and for staff. And then, it provides an implementing program so that the staff will come back later after the plan is adopted and implement that policy.
Thank you. And then, moving on to policy LU 3.5, which is the maximum building height. I agree with the mayor, and it was a question I had to. I think we need to give our residents a footage. Because I have heard the sliding scale of, "Oh, three stories is 32 feet. Well, now it's 40. Well, now it's 46." Those are dramatically different. So I completely am in agreement with that. And also, again, not wordsmithing, but conceptually, on LU 3.5, when we say, "Permit three-story buildings location and two-story buildings for the remainder of town, provided," and we have some things. So is that saying that everywhere else in town, there can be two-story buildings?
On the condition...
Or is that a policy? Is that going to be like the last one where we say something very broad? And then, in the next one, 3.5A, we say, in 3.5A, we talk about three stories in Figure X, but we don't talk about two stories? I mean, how does our 50% rule fit into that? How does, how do all these things fit together? I would just want to be really clear with our residents. And this is where I get back to, what is the picture we're trying to paint? Because we are getting a lot of pieces. And a lot of them should be fit together, in my view. And I don't really, I don't, but I just call out that as a concept, are we trying to say our concept is, there are two-story buildings anywhere else in town? Everywhere?
Those last few lines of that program are the essential ones, or of the policy.
Wait, the answer to my question is, is it a yes? I understand it's subject to X, Y, and Z. Is the answer to my question, yes? There can be two-story buildings everywhere in town?
Yes, provided it follows the development rules, including the 50% rule in the applicable zoning districts.
The 50% rule would still stand unless we receive direction from the council that they want to move away from that. This policy and the allowance of two-story structures is the same as in the existing general plan. What it does is open up the opportunity for three-story. And that two-story limitation for buildings throughout town is further modified by the zoning and design ordinance that establishes that 50% rule.
Okay. Well, it also, the current language reads, "Single-story elements along street frontages for commercial and residential developments are preferable in most situations." And that language has been taken out. So that's my question. Conceptually, are we now saying, "Two stories, subject to A, B, and C, okay everywhere?"
Mainly subject to the new rule on massing. And we thought that the new rule on massing, which is back a slide, gives a lot more direction on the form of buildings and how buildings relate to one another. And this idea that this verticality is not something that is consistent with Yountville, that things like partial upper stories and second setbacks for that upper-story volume, that those really get at what the, that 50% rule is intended to get at, but without using descriptive terms like this. So we're hoping that this gives greater definition to those massing rules.
And so, when we talk about the potential for three stories to hopefully drive local businesses, how do we fit that? And perhaps we should discuss that in context with another piece of this where it says, where the tag has considered that businesses should be market-driven rather than capped. How do, just conceptually, I would like to see all of that considered together. Because if we build three stories and we put wineries on all three stories because we have determined we are a market-driven economy, then we have not, I mean, just conceptually, to me, those have to be looked at together.
I would say, first, you know, the way, I kind of now understand, Councilmember Dorman, it's really hard without, you know, here's the guidebook that we're looking at. Because there's the bits and pieces that we need to go put that together. So we are looking at some of those incrementally. But to answer your question, the proposed policy had strict prohibition on, you know, the intent, the bonus intensity was not going to be given to restaurant, alcohol, and cannabis-related, so that it would foster the other areas that were of greater interest. Because the community feedback is, "We seem to have enough restaurants, maybe different price points, people are interested in." Certainly didn't see a real need for more tasting rooms. The community discussion is not really, it's fluid on whether caps or market. The feedback we're receiving is market. So what we're doing in this area is trying to provide tools to encourage, what I would call, general retail, office. Because, you know, we heard a lot of concerns about, and I'm going to be honest, it's hairstylists, barber shop, even just a basic office, you know? Somebody that lives here that doesn't have enough space, that maybe is a insurance salesman, or attorneys that are just looking for something. "We don't have space." And that's where the intent, and again, yes, and I want to remind everybody that all of these are approved under a conditional use permit. So the idea first is, and it may be okay, again, council and community may say, "No, we're not interested in three stories." But the guidelines for how do we increase that, that's where we're really trying to go, is what's the given flow? And are there, you know, if there's no interest in that, then you're going to tell us that. And the community will, but we were trying to figure out with, what might we be able to do to influence that condition?
So along those same lines, one of the drawings on one of the slides shows, and it's light print, and I'm in halfway the dark up here. But I think it shows a 10-foot setback off Washington for a 30-foot-high building. And it's this little building right here, which I know has the massing mitigation on it.
Downtown Core with the Larkspur picture.
Thank you.
This one here?
So where in town do we have something that looks like that? That is 10 feet off of a street and is that tall? So that our residents could go and look at it?
I'd look at Maison Fleurie, right behind us.
Is that 10 feet off a street? No, there's a parking lot there to mitigate.
No, the main building from Yount Street, when you face it from there. I mean, I'm not going to say it's exactly 10.
The brick, two-story building.
But I don't think it's, I don't think it's a considerable setback.
I would say Stewart and Heston, they're probably in number. And they might vary between five and eight and 10 feet. But it also depends on the location of the sidewalk and whether that's on the property or in the right-of-way, so.
Okay, I just want to know, because it's hard for me to visualize what a 20 or 30-foot building is going to look like. Again, because we have such an open now. So I will go look at those. Thank you.
So we're not proposing what those setbacks are, but we're more referring to the more general rule on massing. And then, those will help inform the zoning and design ordinance amendments that would follow this general plan. So we're looking, trying to get more of the broader policy rather than 10-foot setbacks at 30 feet, something of that nature. But we do know that as part of these rules, that that element of verticality is important, that going up 30 feet would not be consistent with that rule on massing, that they would have to show, some buildings would have to include some type of articulation and change, more similar to Maison Fleurie, where you see the two different building heights.
Couldn't you use examples like, Chichio would be an example, Bouchon Restaurant would be an example, Heston might be an example of all, either at or within. I think Heston's actually inside the 10-foot setback, because we gave an exception there. Those would all be examples of two-story buildings that are within 10 feet of, they happen to be on the east side, but those would be examples, I think.
And of course, Hill and the Bistro are on the sidewalk.
They're façades at least, that show that.
Edward James Courtyard.
Okay. And then, just again, conceptually, we're talking about, well, we wouldn't have a 10-foot setback, or we wouldn't do this, or we wouldn't do that. So conceptually, we have LU 3.5 that says, "Provided the development considers context, view corridors, setbacks." And then, we have 3.5A, which talks about design standard ordinance to allow three-story development in the area shown in Figure X. So do we do that all at the same time? Or, I mean, how does that all fit together? Because I understand we're on a concept, but partially, at least for me, a concept has to be underpinned by, what do we see as the concept? What are the details of it?
So, our goal is to put an image to some of these standards as we move forward. And we, some of our ideas are working with an illustrator to have drawings as to massing and height and setbacks. And those can help inform the design standards ordinance amendment. We're referencing some specifically, where we're looking at a three-story change here. But in, on page one, we also have a more general program that is presented, that is the zoning ordinance amendment that will follow this effort to simplify and consolidate development standards and design guidelines to ensure the consistency with the general plan. So wherever we're making changes, we would come back with that. And our goal really would be to follow on the heels of the general plan update so that we get better implementing documents in place and so that everything is consistent. The goal is that we want our general plan to be consistent as to all elements and chapters, but then also to flow into the design ordinance and zoning ordinance, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Other questions from council before I invite the audience to ask questions? Okay, let's get to the audience. Gentlemen, I think you had a question or a comment, if you could come up to the microphone, please?
I have some sharp questions.
That's okay, we still need you, so we can get it recorded.
I'm Dick Woodson at 2004 Humboldt Street. And I just wanted a little clarification. Excuse me for going back a little to the parking and along that west side of town. And I think you're intimating that you want the possibility of parking on different levels. And I was just wondering if that was mentioned in there? Or if you need to mention that specifically? I see something that says tandem, and I suppose that means one behind the other. So do you need to put anything in there about multi-story on that?
I think there was a section here that referenced parking structures here in the middle of the third line, valet tandem parking structures.
Yeah, that's it, yeah.
Now, if there's clarity, if Sandra, you think multi-level parking structures adds clarity to that? I mean, I think structure implies not just street level, but I think, isn't that what you're referencing, Mr. Woodson?
Yes, it is.
Okay. So that's something I think may be a clarifying...
Consider, yeah.
Multi-level, not identifying how many levels, but the fact that it's above ground.
More than one.
Yeah, thank you. Any other questions about our current conversation? Yes, Ms. Reeves?
Pam Reeves, I was also interested in this parking policy. Particularly two parts, which is the offsite parking and valet parking. It would appear that our huge amount of parking from the vintage 1870 has come to an end and that most of those spaces are already spoken for because of the development that's happened in those two parcels, JCB and the platform, whatever. So what is, where are we locating this offsite parking? And if you're talking about valet parking, what are you designating as the space that the valet is actually going to leave the cars in? Because I'm just thinking about what happens in the summertime with all the Uber cars that are dodging around the neighborhoods looking for a place to park until somebody calls them. And if there's valets competing for those same spaces, how's that going to look to the rest of the people who are actually living here?
I'll attempt to answer a couple of the questions first, Pam. The first element with regard to off-street parking is, the town has, since the 1992 general plan, allowed for property owners to bring offsite parking agreements. A great example is actually Bouchon and Edward James Plaza. So the language continues to allow those types of agreements that are already in place. I don't know that I would subscribe, the, when we look at offsite parking, it's a secured arrangement that a property owner and part of their conditional use permit is meeting the parking. The second part about valet parking is actually encouraging, in some cases, the property owners to use the existing asphalt for valet parking smarter. Because if they have a valet operation, they can use different configurations and aisleway arrangements to maximize the existing asphalt without growing. So we're just really talking here, these aren't specifics. And it would be all part of what a person, with their application, would have to bring in with their employee parking management plan. But it would allow for valet parking is one way to do it. And that would be how they could do it. The same way, we've, in the past, we've had some prohibition on tandem parking. And we found that in certain circumstances, tandem parking can be smart. Again, here is, can we have some flexibility on how to better use the existing asphalt that may exist? So that's where we're really coming on the parking policy. Two examples of that, the tandem parking that's working up at R&amp;D Kitchen in that parking lot at Washington Square, and the valet parking at Barisona Hotel right here. So they maximize much more parking capacity at the hotel by having it all valet than they would have if they only striped it in a conventional way. Nathan?
I just want to highlight two groups of words in this policy that really came out of result of an in-depth discussion at the town advisory group. The words "and other creative solutions" and the words "neighborhood context", which is pretty much a blanket, it's not a blanket approval or not a blanket denial. It's allowing opportunities for creative parking solutions that also consider neighborhood context. So if someone wants to propose doing a valet that drops someone off in front of Timmy's house? No, that probably wouldn't be considering neighborhood context enough. So this policy really allows room for creativity while also creating enough checks and balances to make sure that new solution isn't out of this world. Does that make sense?
Yes.
So my concern is that at the time, right now, that sounds perfect, right? But at the time of an application, oftentimes, people who aren't able to come to the public hearings... But at the time of an application, oftentimes people who, who aren't able to come to the, the, um, public hearings. Who would object to things like a valet off-site parking arrangement. Would have to really muster up to get here where we could handle it in the language. And I just feel like if you could tighten up the language to say, not so much off-site parking, but parking agreements. With other landowners rather than saying, oh, well, we're, we're going to valet park over at the park or in front of that neighborhood. So that it's more, um, upfront for the developer and for the residents.
Thank you.
And just to bring you back to the step in between this and a development permit would be the more specific rules in the zoning and design ordinance.
Right.
That flow from this.
Any other public questions or comments on this item? Okay, so any, uh, you need, you still need direction from us?
Yes.
So we've asked our questions, so can we provide direction on how we feel about the language as presented? I think Councilor Dorman has already offered, uh, fairly extensive evaluation of that content. But if you wanted to either say anything further on those items?
Um, thanks. Uh, I'm always going to be in favor of taking things to our community. So I'm in favor of taking it to the community, but I would just ask that when we take it, we'd be really fair and transparent about it. And we really say, because this is not an advocacy situation, this is an information presentation situation. We'd be really fair and say, it could look like this, it could look like that. It's going to depend on what the ordinances say. And for that, you have to rely on additional community input in your council. So I'm, of course, in favor of taking it, and let's hear from the community. Same with the parking, um, it could look like this, it could look like that. Let's find out where you, as our community, wants to be. But yes, I'm in favor of taking both aspects.
Councilmember Durham?
I know, good timing. I'm gonna, I'm gonna be honest, this, this whole rushing, I, I'm all for taking it all to the community. But I'm sitting here beyond frustrating, frustrated, taking copious notes, trying to follow through on page three and then jumping over to page twenty-one. And then jumping back to page twelve for program LU one-one-B, but then I need to go back to policy LU three point eight. All I ask is you make it a lot more clear to the community.
I think what we can do and, um, the effort here was to show you the work because the tag went through each piece incrementally. So we're, we're trying to show you, but what I, what I'm sensing from you all is we'll give you a proposed document. Highlights and things differently so you can see what it looks like and flows as a draft document. I'm, I'm sensing.
I think, Steve, what, what you're hearing from at least two council members is to consolidate some of these concepts that work together. Rather than having them so independently listed that it's, it's out of context.
No, I think.
That's all, that's all we needed.
I think staff, but I think when I'm saying that is, we'll have to start bundling it as how it would look there, and that's all I'm just saying. We, we can do that.
Okay, did you have more?
I do have more. Then that speaks to Councilmember Dorman's opening statement about, I mean, I like this idea. We probably differ on that in terms of doing it piece by piece. But if we're going to do it piece by piece and not do it the way Councilmember Dorman said, then we need to bundle it together. The legislation text has not even gone in order of what you were going to present it. So that's what I'm asking moving forward.
Councilmember Mueller?
Uh, conceptually, I'm fine with this. Um, I, I think this is something we definitely should take to the public and get, uh, their, their detail on. And their, what they would like to see. I, I do think, uh, again, and I, I concur with what was been said about how it's been presented. When we take this to the community, in, in addition to what you've kind of heard before. And, and I think the mayor has brought it up many times during this meeting. This is a concept, this is a policy. We're not doing a good job of talking about what that is and what that isn't. And I, I think, you know, some, a lot of the verbiage I've kind of heard from some of the, the public right now is that there, there, there's a little frustration out there. About this whole way this is being presented because we're really not speaking to them. So as you're doing all that, if you can really figure out a way so that they, um, they know what a policy is and what they're really supposed to react to. And a program.
Vice Mayor?
I think we're, am I on? Here, you can have this one.
Should be.
Excuse me. I have particular biases about parking structures and, but I'm not, I don't want to bring my biases forward. I want this to all come to the community, and I have to agree with my colleagues. I, it, this is, it's not easy to follow for us, and we're used to looking at land use issues. So for the community, we need it to be a lot clearer, and if that means bundling it together, however you're going to do that. Then I think that that's what needs to be done. Thank you.
So I'll speak a little bit to the content of this section of downtown Yountville, west side of Washington Street. I do think it's helpful to have the images that you presented in your presentation to see in real, you know, clarity, the image, the imagery. But also, Sandra, you mentioned adding some, um, artist renderings that help us. I think one thing that's been, um, a little bit confusing is what does, how does it, uh, transition from the words here to the reality on the street? And so some of the cross-sections that you were showing, I think, are exactly what we're talking about. More of that from perspectives like if we're standing on Washington Street on the sidewalk on the east side. If we're in the Hurley's parking lot and we're looking over across the street, what do we see? You know, it, right now, it's a split post fence with some hedge and one-level parking. What are we talking about that changing to? That's what we, we require that of applicants when they come forward with a development project to have some, uh, real-time and space rendering. So I think that's what I'm hearing the council asking for and some of the audience asking for that kind of clarity as much as we can provide. In terms of the content, I think the, um, the tag and the ZDRB have done a nice job of identifying the concepts that can be considered in certain areas. And that's one thing that we need to remember is, if we're talking about three stories, whatever that foot height becomes. That that's not in places we all consider inappropriate. It's places we feel have a minimal or no impact on view corridors that, that are defined. Or the ambiance and feel of walking up and down Washington Street. But it doesn't mean that they can't work. The parking structure, like I said earlier, we get this very industrial, big-city downtown Napa. We get that feel of a concrete block. None of us are going to like that idea, that's not what you're proposing. But we have to get past that imagery to what the real concept is. You showing the living wall of a parking structure helps that. So, uh, as much of that as you can provide, putting images to these words, I think will be helpful. Evolving, I have, these are my notes, the active streetscape, uh, that's a little lacking on the west side of the street. Yes, that's true, but maybe that's what we want to continue to see. That we don't become too much of a corridor like Main Street and St. Helena. That has a certain character and style that, uh, may be appropriate for St. Helena. We may or may not want that look. And that's what we're talking about is, do we want to bring in those sides so that it's more defined and confined? Or do we want to keep it open even if it's a parking lot? But that's part of the whole conversation we're, we're having here. I still would like us to be very creative about how we're committing our parking requirements going forward. It's impossible for us to know what's going to be appropriate in fifteen to twenty years. But if we're already seeing our parking requirements being, um, less and less appropriate, then we need to really be creative about what we can do. I think you're showing some examples of how we can be there. Whether it's setting up higher-than-typical multi-structure so that it can be converted to a non-parking use. We talked about that about an hour ago, I think. But also, I saw in there the stackable parking structures. Whether cars are going to fit, you know, we have parking stripes out here that did not anticipate SUVs. It's plain and simple, and so we need to try to have that vision too. So, um, more imagery to support the, the, the words, I think. Uh, but I, I like the language that the tag and the ZDRB has brought forward. Do you need any more guidance from us?
No, I think that's great.
Okay, Councilmember Dorman?
Um, just one thing to go on to this, and, uh, look, I know I'm being a Debbie Downer here today, and it's so much easier to edit than it is to create. So thank you for creating and allowing us to edit. The information is all very good, it's just in the package. But along the lines of more graphics, which the mayor said, um, we might even consider offering a walking tour. And say, hey, we're going to do it one time, one time only, meet, we're going to walk to five places where there's this kind of building that are, that's ten feet off. Or this kind of buildings that's fifteen feet off, and let people actually see it. Just a suggestion.
Or at least provide images that we, we talked about, what is, um, a two-story within a ten-foot setback? And have our exact examples, if it's Bouchon Restaurant, if it's Heston, if it's something else. And people say, oh, I get that, when I walk my dog past that, I don't even notice it's a thirty-foot building ten feet away from me because it's been there for a while.
First of all, we appreciate the feedback. And I have to be very honest, I counseled our staff that we're looking at this. And we're trying to provide you all of the detail, the background, the actual edits, and the rationale either made by the ZDRB or the tag. So, um, I think we clearly can take now, and what I'm hearing from you all is start putting it in a format. That we can see in terms of the chapters, the bundles, and all the things that go together. I think the idea of a walking tour, we can certainly incorporate, add that into a community workshop. So these are some things that we will be continuing to refine as we move. I think it's also important from the council that we chose to focus on the most controversial items upfront. So you need to be aware of that because when you look at the nineteen ninety-two general plan, aside from wordsmithing. Probably seventy-five to eighty percent of the nineteen ninety-two general plan is going to continue in some level. It may be rebranded or have a new number, but in many cases, it's going to exist because that's been reflecting and it served the community well. So we're gonna, we got a few more questions for you on this structure, so bear with us, but we will get the format. I'm going to ask that you all keep this because what I'm also going to do is, I'm, I'm going to encourage each of you to have a meeting with Sandra and Nathan and I. So we can make sure that any questions you may have on the background and the details are, are addressed. I want to make sure we have that opportunity, and then we'll, um, put our program back together and be ready for the community workshops.
And can I suggest, uh, maybe either in addition or instead of a walking tour that we use a trolley? Uh, maybe it's the backup trolley, um, not everyone that might be interested. I know, Steve, if it costs us a couple bucks, so be it. But if, if we, we can't assume that everyone that's going to be interested is going to be comfortable walking up and down Washington Street.
Yeah, I'm just saying, I may have to rent a different vehicle because NDTA, I'm just saying, we'll, we'll figure out how to make it mobile accessible.
A, a vehicle that will allow people to be able to look out, you know, even if we had to rent one of those tour buses that now have sides that go down.
We, we hear you, we'll, we'll be able to figure, it may not be the trolley just because of NDTA restrictions.
That's a great idea, just walking was a loose term, but yes, that is a great idea. Thank you.
Okay, uh, any other questions or comments? Okay, so we have just roughly thirty minutes left, is there, uh, there's more to this section, or is there another section we can try to tackle?
There's, there's no more to this section, we have a couple of other, um, areas that we wanted to highlight and discuss. We have one where the property owner is here, so it would be, um, it would be great if we could kind of at least deal with that one issue.
Let's do that.
Okay. So this.
We might jump ahead and it'll probably be our last issue.
Okay.
So, uh, so this is in regard to Humboldt Street parcels, two parcels that are there on the corner of Humboldt and Jefferson. And they are currently zoned Old Town Historic. And we've had a request from the property owner to, um, consider within the context of the general plan update, rezoning this to a commercial district. And so we are actually, um, had a discussion about rezoning it to residential scaled commercial, which is what is zoned across the, um, the street. Again, it's two parcels, and, um, this parcel, well, you can't see my pointer here. But the parcel to the, to the east was recently developed, dealt, developed with a single-family home. The owner owns that home, and they have that home there. So this is, there's some views here, some photographs of the views of the parcel. The one to the upper left is the view of the parcel, which is currently undeveloped. And we have some views from the street on Humboldt Street. And then at the bottom is the view across the street, which is, the, the, this parcel is actually looking at the side of some, uh, of a commercial development. So we, um, discussed this with the tag, and the tag was also kind of split on this one, which is why we wanted to bring it forward. The tag, um, voted for or five against actually, uh, this idea of rezoning it to residential uses. The ZDRB was actually, however, in favor of rezoning to commercial and to do, and specifically, we're talking about residential scaled commercial. With, um, a condition, first of all, that the parcels be merged because the Z, and that was something that the ZDRB wanted to add. Because they felt that, um, it would be best if the parking was, was included in the, to the rear of the parcel. And, um, and then also with a prohibition against alcohol-related and restaurant uses on this parcel. So if, um, I'm sure that the, the property owner would like to talk about this. But again, we wanted to bring it forward because we kind of had some split direction. The, the tag was against rezoning, but the ZDRB is actually in favor of rezoning with those, with those, um, conditions. And this would be one of those parcels that I was talking to you about. If we were going to change, um, the zoning of this parcel, that this is something we would want to include now with the environmental analysis. At least to get the environmental consultant started on that. So we'd like to get some direction, um, about how we may consider dealing with these parcels in the future. And we'll, of course, would also want to bring this to the, to the community at the workshop and get some feedback from them.
And before we get to that, if you could go back to where you had the, the images of the area. So right across the street, the bottom-right photograph, uh, just for clarification, both of those properties used to be in residential, correct? The Gates Realty and what's now the Demo, and now both of those are commercial?
Yes.
Okay, just so there's clarity, there will be a building where there is no building to the left of the Gates office, okay.
That's a construction fence we see.
Right, and that's, um, is that, I can't remember, what's, is that a one-story or two-story?
Two-story.
And the two-story meaning under thirty, or no more than thirty feet?
Up to thirty feet.
Yeah, okay, just for all of the context, okay. Any specific questions from the council before, um, we proceed? Yeah, Councilmember Durham?
I.
Is this the one that's working?
Why, what were the, what were the nays, especially I see Whitney was against this? So do you remember, I, I read.
Yes.
I don't see the details.
So some of the concerns that we've heard are that it joins residential on two sides. Whereas most of the residential scale district just backs up to residential. The other is that this is not directly fronting onto Washington, just a corner of the property touches it, and it's really separated. By right-of-way where we have public art and the walkway to Vandeleer Park. So it's not really what is part of considered the Washington Street corridor, those two reasons.
Thank you very much.
Councilmember Mueller?
Um, so, uh, I just wanted to ask a further clarifying question of dividing it into two parcels. Is that something that would really needed to, would need to be done now at, at this concept stage? Or?
No, so this would.
We, we could just say, you know, leave it one parcel and then further.
Right now, it is two parcels.
Oh, it is two parcels, okay.
And the policy suggests the rezoning, but includes this condition that upon a redevelopment application, that merger would be required. And that's what it's getting at without stating all the technical steps that are necessary. That merger would be necessary for an application consideration.
Okay.
As part of that, essentially as a condition of approval when we see a development application.
The merger would be needed, I'm sorry, I missed that. Why couldn't one parcel remain residential? Is it the size of the two parcels?
There are two smallish parcels that would have very tight congested commercial development, but as one larger parcel, it's more feasibly developed.
Got it. Okay. Okay, so I'd invite the applicant, not applicant, the owner, to come, tell us what your thoughts are.
Yeah, thank you, staff, for putting this proposed item on the policy, and thank you for hearing us today, council. My name's Rich Woodson. I live at 2008 Humboldt Street with my wife and my daughter. My father's here also. He lives at 2004 Humboldt Street. We wanted to talk today about the potential rezoning of those two lots into one lot. Yountville has changed significantly since 1968, and when the zoning for these parcels was originally determined. There are now 48 businesses accommodating over a million visitors here each year, and nearly everyone of which will walk or drive past that corner of Humboldt and Washington Street at some point. The tourists and each of the 3,000 residents of Yountville would be far better served by a business at this location, such as a pharmacy, rather than an empty lot. Unlike the planned units on North Washington, this location is central to the town. It can readily provide all the onsite parking needed to accommodate its users, and is easily accessible to pedestrians on two frontages. My family's owned this property for 30 years, and during that time, we've received numerous questions about why it's undeveloped. And I can offer them a simple answer, it's not properly zoned. As anyone who stands on that corner during the week to see the flow of tourist, hospitality employees, and local residents would know, it's totally unsuitable for a home. I live a mere two doors away, and I'm treated regularly to bachelorette parties, having my front yard used for a photo shoot, and the car activity of constant employee shift changes from all the restaurants and hotels. Oh, and the Uber thing that was mentioned earlier, too, it's also a great spot for the Uber parking. I love seeing others share the enthusiasm that I have for this town every day, but if this spot were suitable for residences, we would have put homes there decades ago. The street itself has changed significantly since 1989, when we moved here. Originally, five of the 10 lots were someone else's permanent residence. Today, there was one commercial and four as-yet undeveloped parcels. Today, only three houses along this street are primary residences, two of which belong to my family. The number of commercial lots have doubled, and the remaining homes now are only used as part-time vacation homes. I'm glad to see others calling this great town home, even if it's only for the weekend, but if anyone's going to be impacted by the rezoning of this area, it's me. What is suitable for this spot is a business. It's surrounded on three angles by popular public sites, a hotel, a real estate office, and a public park. It's crossed by a pedestrian sidewalk, which carries thousands of people every week. And the only residential neighbor, other than myself, is deeply insulated from the lot by not only a driveway easement, also a row of six-foot-tall olive trees, and a dense eight-foot-tall hedge, which completely mitigates any impact. As the only permanent resident to be directly impacted by this change, I would ensure the design and use is agreeable to everyone nearby. The style would be complementary to the surrounding buildings, and the build quality would be similar to what I've created for my own home. To ensure we will be using this, we will be using the same local architect, the same local builder, who also developed several other commercial projects in town, including Jessup Sellers and Maison Rie. We would love to work with this town to realize its vision for the future by correcting this zoning gap along the Washington Street corridor, and providing a valuable business which serves the health and welfare of its residents and visitors alike. Thank you.
Thank you. So, any other member of the public that wanted to comment on this? Ms. Reeves?
Pam Reeves. I mentioned before that I felt like that particular property was better suited to residential scaled commercial. And if we're afraid of losing housing units, we could specify that an apartment go on that property as well. As it is now, if it was developed as residential, those would be really expensive houses, and what we're looking for in town is affordable housing, so an apartment would fit that description better. And I feel the same way as the owner, that it really isn't appropriate. That is such a busy corner, and it really doesn't lend itself to the residential quality of most of the rest of the town.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Thoughts from council? I've been, let's start Councilmember Mueller, since I've been favoring the left side all day.
I'm in fully in support of this. I know some other information is going to be coming up at our next meeting, I guess we're going to have, right? About the rest of Washington. It just makes perfect sense to me that our businesses should be on Washington, different types on the west side than the east side. I'm in full support of this.
Okay, I'm going to jump back over to, oh, Councilmember Durham first. I know, I threw you off, didn't I?
I'm full in support of moving this forward to the community as well.
Councilmember Dorman?
So, I'm in support of moving it forward to the community, but I have a question. Can we rezone it to include residential or to include multifamily? Are those options, or does the site not lend itself to that?
The current, or the RSC zoning district, residential scaled commercial, allows a 15 percent FAR bonus for residential, and on a parcel of this size, it really lends itself to one unit rather than two or more.
Can we require a residential unit? I am concerned that, on the one hand, we talk about we don't have enough housing inventory, and now we take two lots off the market.
That could be a requirement of this policy that is achieved through the development application, yes.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor? Do you have a working microphone?
Yes, thank you. I agree that residential scale commercial on that corner would be very nice. I would hope that, I do like the idea of adding a housing unit in an apartment. We don't have enough of those in town, so, but I think that that's, it makes perfect sense to me to bring this forward to the community. I see, I see, I think there'd be a lot of support.
And I would just add, certainly, design of this parcel would need to be vetted, but I'd also want to hear from, I believe there are three residential properties on Jefferson that are on the north side of this parcel. So, it's not just about the impacts that you've identified in your Humboldt neighbors. There are three lots, I believe, there that would be impacted. So, I'd certainly want outreach from the town and some feedback on that before we reach any conclusions, but generally, I think this makes sense to at least consider. And then, we've identified an apartment unit that potentially allows for FAR bonus. We've got our conditions about putting parking lot. Now, one thing that you would be looking at is having a parking impact, because we have required parking in the rear of a commercial parcel along Washington, and so that might be something that you're facing going forward, but we would get into those kind of details well down the road, I think. We need to just have you up here if we can hear from you. Thanks.
Yeah, we fully expected that that would be the case. That's why we considered joining the lot, so that the rear lot, and I knew when I built my house, that I would be abutting a, there would be parking.
And we need to figure out what the rear lot means, because you do have, if it's the Humboldt Street frontage, then the rear lot may be to the north side of you versus the east side, which would be potentially next to your residence. So, that's something that we just have to look at.
Yeah, I imagine that the address-
Sandra, could you identify that right now? That, are we talking about the frontage of this would be on Humboldt, or on the Washington-Jefferson?
Sort of a corner direction toward Washington-Jefferson.
Yeah, so, the frontage, like, the front entrance would be almost on a diagonal, kind of like facing that piece of art, you know, out onto the intersection. But however, if you were coming to patronize that place, you'd be on Humboldt Street, and you'd pull in-
Yeah.
-and you'd park behind that building.
Yeah, those details would get worked out.
Parking off of Humboldt, at the building directed toward Washington.
And I know there's a vault under there, and we've got artwork poured there, and all that stuff that would just have to be-
Yeah.
Figured out.
Thank you, that's very nice. We like having the artwork there.
Okay.
One, Councilmember Durham, you asked about one of the, what were the nays during that? One of the nays, I don't think they had fully considered. It had to do with parking, and I forgot the name of the person who said that, but he said you would be taking away too many spots along Humboldt Street for parking. But it's actually, this provides more spots on Humboldt Street, because it's only one ingress rather than two, which you would have, if you had two residential lots, you'd have two driveways. So, this actually increases the amount of parking along the street, rather than its current zoning.
Thank you.
I have a question, Mr. Woodson, please. Have you been approached by a pharmacy that might be interested in coming in there?
No. What I intend to do is to work with some of the local, family-owned pharmacies in Saint Helene and Napa to bid out who would operate that pharmacy.
Great, thank you.
Just to be clear, we can't make a judgment based on what mayor may or not go in there, so let's not-
This is the fun challenge of living in a small community, where it's really hard to have a conceptual conversation, and then everybody goes into developing the parcel without an application. And there's no application, this is just to continue the dialogue going forward, so just to bring everybody back.
Conceptually. That's the word we've been using today, conceptually.
And we have one more little bit we're going to try to push through, which is what actually led to these residents coming to chat to us, which is the North Washington. And I think, based on the feedback, that should move fairly quickly.
All right. Thank you, Woodsons. So, we have about 15 more minutes, so we do have one more area we're going to cover.
Right. And I do apologize for jumping around, but this is one last area that if we could get some feedback from the council, we could use that to give some direction to our environmental consultant. So, this is in reference to the parcels on North Washington that are zoned, they're currently zoned Old Historic Residential. These are parcels, there's six of them, they're between Creek Street and Pedronee. And you've got some photos here that are showing some of the small, the small structures that are there on those parcels now. And so, the idea is to consider rezoning this to some limited commercial use. We're really talking about small, a lot of service uses. And so, that was kind of the question that we proposed to the community at our workshop that we had last November. And this was the question, it was under which circumstances, if any, would you support rezoning these six parcels on North Washington to commercial? And we had, most of the people were in support of rezoning, so that we could allow small office or service uses within the existing structure. Number three was small office, service, retail uses, where the homeowner resides, so that would be kind of a live-work situation. And we also had support for boutique retail, but not food or wine. There was some support for boutique or small lodging. After that was, in fifth place, was support for complete redevelopment of the parcels. And then, number 10 was no retainers housing, and that, number six, I should say, and that was the least amount. So, actually, most of the people were in favor of rezoning this to commercial, perhaps even allowing the existing buildings to be redeveloped. But most of the support was to use the existing structure, and then to allow some kind of limited retail or service uses within those structures. So, we talked to the TAG and also to the ZDR about this. The TAG actually did not support boutique lodging, but they did support redevelopment of existing buildings, and that was because they were recognizing that some of the existing buildings are very small, they have very limited parking, and they might not be viable for individual commercial development unless the lots were actually aggregated. The parking is a real constraint over there, and office uses without residential might only be viable for some of the parcels within the existing structure. So, they did want to consider this idea of having, redeveloping some of those, allowing for redevelopment of the structures. They also wanted to consider rezone, oh, okay, never mind. So, the program that we kind of fashioned with the input from the TAG and also with the ZDRB is to rezone the six residential parcels on the east side of Washington, as shown in figure X, which we would, which I actually just showed to you, from Old Town Historic to Old Town Commercial, to allow office, service, non-alcohol, retail, and second-floor residential uses within the existing structures, and in redeveloped buildings that reflect the Old Town character. And that's really important, because particularly from, from both the TAG and the ZDRB, we want to ensure that these structures, if they are redeveloped, they are within, kind of reflected the character of Old Town. So, that is the program that we wanted to get some feedback. Again, if this is something that the council's kind of in support of, then we would give that input to the, to the environmental consultant. We would also bring this forward to the, to the work, at the community workshop, to get additional feedback from the community.
Did you have a slide that shows the parcels in question here?
Yeah.
So, so handwritten wines, that's actually Jessup Sellers, and that's on the north side of Pedronee.
So, those are there just to show what's the uses that are adjacent, and also what could be done with these, perhaps with some of these parcels.
So, I'm finding it a little bit misleading showing properties that aren't the ones in question.
Right.
So, that's my first comment. I wanted to just make sure I understand, the corner of Washington and Creek Street has, I think, three residences on that parcel? Is that correct?
There are three structures on that parcel.
Three structures. So, that does impact off of Washington Street, just for consideration. There is a brand-new, still under-construction residence at Starkey and Washington. We have, I believe we have, on the north side of the creek, a flaglot situation with two residences that are of the exact same architectural style. So, we're talking about all of those elements, so, or are we only talking about what purely fronts on Washington?
Yeah.
So, you have a, so those two stone homes on the north side of the creek, the front one could be commercial, the back one would be residential.
They're on separate parcels.
But they're-
But they're-
10 feet away from each other and share a driveway?
Yeah.
It's gravel.
Yeah.
Okay. And there's a residence at the corner on the south side of Starkey that is a small residence. You're talking about that would become commercial?
But not the one behind it where it's notched out, even though, again, there is that shared driveway configuration that goes further east.
And has considering, have we heard from all of the property owners of these parcels that they're interested or not? Or is this, again, just our concept, and it would be vetted eventually?
We've been in discussion with some of them.
Right. What I would also say is, again, this is a similar discussion to the North Agricultural Parcel. Any, any change would, the residential use would stay grandfathered until such point in time as the person may choose to use or develop commercially.
But you might have a house, a business, a house, a business, a house, a business.
And that's why I'm saying, we're asking that, you know, this has been requested by some of the property owners, and if it's not of interest, that's what we're asking.
Okay. Questions from council? Councilmember Mueller? Any questions at this point?
Nope.
Councilmember Durham?
Just so I'm clear, why did you include the second home in on Starkey that doesn't front Washington? You've got the brand-new build, and then you've got the older one next to it. Why is that included?
We think that is a single parcel, but I made a note to check on that.
So, ultimately, that could be, just pull the blue line up, right?
It would be pulled forward.
Okay.
We're referencing it in terms of the six that front onto Washington, we don't want to pull in second-level properties behind. We'll confirm that boundary.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Dorman, questions?
So, again, the net effect of this could be to take away six residences, or more, depending on-
Yeah.
And do we know how many of those- And do we know how many of those residents rent versus are the parcel owners?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, we do. There's the rental registration program, and so we can get those figures for them. We don't have them right in front of us. But if they have come in and received their permit to legally rent their property, then we do know.
Okay, thank you.
Three of the six are owner, one is vacant.
And three are under the rental program?
And one's for sale. One's currently for sale, correct?
Okay.
Vice Mayor?
And it is currently rented.
It is rented.
Any questions?
No, this is something that I definitely want to hear what the community has to say about it. Although I understand that we do want Washington Street to be our, you know, business corridor. I think it's, anyway, I think it's something that I would like the whole community to weigh in on.
Yeah, my feedback, well, I'll mention my feedback in a moment. Any member of the public have questions or a comment? Ms. Reeves, come on. You're almost 100% right now. You can't give up on our last item. Okay, there goes your track record. So comments from council giving direction? Councilmember Dorman?
Again, I'm going to err on the side of taking it to the community, but conceptually, for me, to take six residences out, to put six businesses in, as we look at the whole picture, that's tough. I'll wait to hear from the community on it.
Councilmember Durham?
I want to take it to the community as well, but based on some of the other conversations we have, maybe this can work as well. So I'm open to the idea. But it needs to be discussed.
Councilmember Mueller?
I'm very supportive of this, just like the last item we talked about. Just because this, these properties may change in zoning, there can still be apartments on top, and that was actually in the policy statement, so I don't really see that we'd be losing that. I think you'd be giving the current owners another option to how to use their property. It doesn't mean if somebody is living there or renting there right now, that you would have to throw them out and tear it down. It would be totally up to the property owner how he chooses to use that property. He could continue, or she, to rent it out and leave the houses there, or they, knowing that they're in a commercial zone, could, you know, turn it into residential. I just think it gives the property owners, and it'd certainly be great to hear from them and see what the community thinks, but it gives them more options than they have now, so I support it.
Vice Mayor?
As I said, I think, I, it does alarm me that we would lose six single-family homes, but I'm open to hearing what the, what the owners of those properties want to do with their property, and if they are amenable to putting apartments. I don't know. I do want to bring it to the community. I want to hear what the rest of the community has to say.
Thank you. And we have done some of this in the past further south on Washington. I think it's made more sense when we did this south of Humboldt, where what's now Heston is an example, and kind of cleaning up that corner on Humboldt and Washington. This is less clear to me, partly because all of the residents that we're discussing back up immediately to other residents, where on the south side of Humboldt, they backed up, in some cases, in most cases, to other commercial. That would be one concern. That's kind of a main concern. In one sense, it makes sense that we continue that flow of residential scale commercial that's south of Creek, and then we jump back into commercial north of Pedronee. So there is a gap there. But this is really going to need to get vetted, I think, before I feel comfortable, because it does more immediately impact the resident parcels to the east. There is some concern about the loss of residential units in general, but I think there's, there are ways to mitigate that, especially if these get redeveloped, like we just talked about in the previous, requiring a housing unit for any redevelopment would be one way to do that. So definitely further discussion to be had. It's worth that conversation, though. Okay, any other business for us today? You couldn't, you couldn't bring it up when public comment? Okay, Carol, come on.
Just being back here six months, of all the buildings, stuff's going on, to me, I think an ideal person to buy this, or, I mean, it's pretty obvious, is a restoration. Hard, I mean, this is all right across from where their existing building, so it'd be.
Well, actually, quite a bit of it is south of that.
But it's close.
There's one residence that would be across.
I'm not saying that's bad, I'm just saying that that, you know.
But only one of the residences we're talking about is directly across from Maison Rie, the rest of it's south.
Right, it's just south of that, but that, anyway, I mean, of an existing business that's in town and growing, and things that that's, they're opening soon, hopefully, so we can get that done. But just the location, that's just last comment.
Okay, thank you. Any other last, last? Okay. Great, well, I think we're finished for today.
And I just want to say, thank you for your feedback. As we're moving through, you, I do want to really acknowledge the work of our staff team here, our consultant team, and the TAG in particular, and the ZDRB. You've seen a very, and I, I know, we hear you loud and clear on it's hard for you to go from A B in page 12 to 17, so we'll get you a different roadmap. But I do want you to realize how much effort that, you know, and it really is, in some of these, it's one piece at a time, one piece at a time, and then we're building it back into a book. And we're starting with a book. That's the other thing, is we're not throwing away the 1992 general plan. So you're looking, in some cases, on elements being added, emphasis. So I do appreciate, these were some of the really heavy, heavy lifting items, and then we'll work with all of you to kind of go over also what's not changing, because I think we want to share with you, we have some policies about our working with the Veterans Home and explaining those nuances. There's a lot of existing that we just, we've packaged those together, so we'll walk with you through some of those. But clearly, we can do a different format job on presentation, and we'll do that for you.
And either Sandra or Nathan, next, one of these general plan and Vision Yountville workshops is, what date?
The next workshop is scheduled for April 26. Before we get there, we'd like to have another study session with you. It's scheduled for March 27.
Same time, same location?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And that'll obviously be posted prior to that.
Yes.
Reminders put out. Okay.
Thinking we might need a third.
Just want to, whoa, this one works really well. I just wanted to encourage everyone to visit envisionyountville.com, where there is a calendar of events, where the study session was on the calendar, as well as the March 27 study session is also on that calendar. So if we ever have a question of, well, when is there a TAG meeting? When is there a workshop? When is there a study session? If it's Envision Yountville related, it's on that calendar.
And we'll be posting this video on that webpage as well.
On that website shortly.
Okay. Thank you for the presentation today, and the conversation, and bringing all these concepts for us to consider. We'll do a little bit more of it, so thank you. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn to our next regular meeting, which is Tuesday, March 6, at 6:00 p.m. Somebody?
I make a motion.
Thank you.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.